Press.
Oh, you can wear a shirt. Oh, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
The question is, do we, you know, talking to me, I'm like, did I give you my hand this time?
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, and another thing, uh, or is that something?
Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm Peter O'Taki, honored to be mayor of Menlo Park, particularly on a day in February when it was seventy-five degrees outside. Many of my friends on the East Coast are jealous, and I like to make them jealous. Anyway, I'd like to call the meeting to order on February 6th. My apologies, we had to start late. Our closed session ran a little long. If I can ask, before I do introductions, I'd like to ask us all to take a moment of silence in just a second to honor former mayor Billy Ray White, who recently passed away. Charles White, his son notified the city recently upon the passing of his father. Billy Ray White was elected to the City Council in nineteen seventy-eight, then re-elected in nineteen eighty-two after receiving the most votes of any candidate. He served as mayor of the city three times, from April of nineteen eighty to April of nineteen eighty-one, from November of nineteen eighty-two to nineteen eighty-three, and November of nineteen eighty-five to nineteen eighty-six. Billy Ray was a longtime resident of Bellhaven, and we certainly mourn his passing. And so with that, if I can ask you to join me in a moment of silence. All right, thank you very much. I'd like to introduce my colleagues here on the City Council, part of our roll call. To my right, Councilmember Rich Klein. Next to me is Councilmember Catherine Carlton. To my left is Vice Mayor Ray Mueller, and over to my left is Councilmember Kirsten Keith. Over on the table to my left is City Manager Alex McIntyre, City Attorney Bill McClure. Over on this side is Deputy City Clerk Yelena Harada. And if you'd like to speak this evening, we invite you to do so. If you could kindly fill out a speaker card and hand that to Yelena, and she will help organize that on the various items this evening. If I can ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I will next report on closed session. We didn't have, take any actions, so nothing to report there. And as I understand, I think we are going to jump to item F, because I think we're going to continue item E to the next meeting. The study session is on F1, Provide Direction on Potential Alternatives to Form a Transportation Management Association. Assistant Public Works Director Nikki Nagaya will introduce the item, and I think Nicholas Yi will be joining as well, so why don't you come on up and join us?
Oh, Peter O'Taki, there's a presentation lined up for this item, and we're experiencing some technical issues with the presentation, so just bear with us for a few minutes.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
The presentation that is scheduled for this item is not available at this moment, so we're working on that. Thank you.
Okay, got it.
We might take the Commissioner reports, if that is okay with you. Thank you.
Okay, sure. Why don't we go ahead and do that, then, and we'll come back to the study session. So Commissioner Reports, item G1, the Environmental Quality Commission Quarterly Report. Is Janelle with us? I'm not sure. Oh, here she is. Hi, Janelle.
Hi.
Thank you for.
Mayor and councilmembers, thank you for having me to give our quarterly update. Is the deck loaded? Oh, we have no decks at all?
We are experiencing issues with one of our servers, so we're not able to play any presentations at this moment.
I can try to give you a verbal update. It is a bit visually oriented, so that will not be as high quality. It's up to you guys.
Yeah.
How about if we wait and see how we come with the PowerPoints, and if they're not, if it's not happening, I'll come back and do a verbal. Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right. The next Commission Report is the Library Commission. Library Commissioner Grayson Badgley. Badgley, welcome, and thank you. And I don't know if you need slides, but hopefully you could do a verbal presentation.
I've got it all right here.
Great.
No slides.
Wonderful. Thank you, Grayson.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. My name's Grayson Badgley, and it's my pleasure to offer the quarterly update from the Library Commission. My goal tonight is twofold. First, I want to just update you to what we've been working on, and then I'd like to also just give you a preview of our forthcoming work plan, which we hope to approve at our next Commission meeting and submit to you guys for approval. Since about last March, when the space needs studies happened for the main library, the focus of the Library Commission has changed rather dramatically. As you know, there's been a dramatic increase in the sort of interest in the library and library affairs, with talk about a new library, with a donor coming forward, with potentially money for a new library, and also talking about an updated branch in the Bellhaven community. I think probably the most, the largest change that we've seen has been an incredible increase in participation from the community at Library Commission communities. I haven't been a Commissioner that long, but when I first started, just Commissioners. Nowadays, pretty reliably, we're four, last meeting was about a dozen members of the community, are at these Commission meetings, giving public comment, staying for the entire time, and we don't move too quickly. So people are really interested in this. People are really, the library is something really important to them, and I think it's important to communicate that there's this outpouring of interest, and people wanting to make sure that they're part of the process and their voices are heard. I think the biggest thing that we've heard about in the last couple of months from that participation has not been about the new library. It's been about making sure that we have a modern, updated branch library in the Bellhaven community. Members of the Bellhaven community are at every single one of our meetings, and they're letting us know what their community needs. And to that end, in our updated work plan, our first goal is going to be, is to support the establishment of an updated, full-service, modern branch library in the Bellhaven community. And we see this as sort of serving two purposes. I mean, there's going to be a whole needs assessment, but we just see it as the incredible step towards improving access to library services in Menlo Park. But it also seems just a really essential step for taking into account all the growth that's anticipated, especially in that part of town, in the future. And I think that, you know, that it's all well and good to think about what's, you know, building new branches, that's always a good thing. But even in the short term, I think there's already been changes that we're really excited about, and we're thankful that the City Council and the city as a whole has already, steps they've already taken. In particular, increasing opening hours by thirteen hours. And just to mark your calendars, on Sunday, the twenty-fifth, which is a day that Bellhaven Branch previously was not open on, from one to three, is going to be sort of a grand opening, and would like to extend an invitation to all of you to attend that. But there's also been other changes. There's an increase in the materials for circulation, the new carpets, all that other sort of stuff. So those are all great steps that we're really encouraged by. The second issue that we're focusing on our work plan is working towards an updated main library. And I think that this is, there's been a lot of discussion about this, but in the minds of the Commission, there's about three, there's three really important things that would happen with a new main branch library. There's having more meeting rooms that don't exist and, or kind of exist in the current library, where people can take meetings, they can have after-school study groups, where some of the language programs at the library would really be greatly served by these. So also just updating the teen and children's section of the library, that's something that, having a new, modern facility would really help increase the level of programming that could be offered. So we also see that as being, that's the second aspect of our work plan that we'll put forward to you. And with both of these, with both of these first two items on our work plan, I think that one of the things that's really essential for supporting both of them is an increase in communication from City Council and from the Commission back to, back to just the citizens of Menlo Park. And one thing that we're planning to do to further that end is we're going to, we're committed to holding several sort of meet-the-Commissioner-style events that are outside the context of our Commission meetings, where we can just talk to people, hear what they're saying. And that's something that we can do, but I also think I'd like to ask Council tonight, you know, there might be some sort of way of thinking through how the Commission and the City Council could sort of better coordinate to make sure that we're getting information as things change out in an orderly fashion. And I know that more communication is always better, but I think that it's definitely something that we need to be paying particular attention to. We've heard lots of comments of things moving a little bit too quickly, or, you know, people not feeling like they could, you know, figure out, well, where exactly does everything stand? And I think that's something that we can address. And I want to keep this update sort of short, and I'll end on something that is not a gigantic capital project, so that you don't think that's the only thing that the Library Commission is interested in. There's two things I want to highlight that will appear on our work plan. The first is the Little Free Library Pilot Program, which is something that we've been working quite actively on developing. And when I say "we," I mean the Commission, but in particular Jackie Sebrian, who's been championing this for quite some time. For just your knowledge and everyone who's behind me, Little Free Libraries are those little tiny houses where you fill them up with books, and people take one, leave one, and it's just an easy way to make books accessible to everybody. And I guess I wanted to read sort of the mission statement of the Little Free Library Program, and it's "building community, spreading creativity, and inspiring readers." And the goal that we have in our work plan is to have three Little Free Libraries on city property. That's something we've already started working with Parks and Recreation about figuring out what that would actually look like, but I'd just like to ask Council, if that's something that you're interested in, making that known and having someone who helps push that along would help us quite a bit. I think that it's just a small, easy way to make books everywhere in Menlo Park, and sends just the absolute right message, and I think it's just a little change that can potentially make a big difference. The second thing that we've been working on is another sort of Commission-led initiative has been a Menlo Park sort of film club. This is Lynn Bramlett's project that she's been doing, and it's been running for several months now and has, you know, pretty regular attendance. And there's all sorts of fantastic programming that happens at the Menlo Park Library, but what's kind of cool about this is something that the Commission thought needed to be done, and a Commissioner stepped up and is making it happen. So sort of continuing that and looking for other little opportunities where the Commission can sort of take off little projects like that, well, you'll see those also reflected in our work plan. And with that, that concludes my update.
Great, thank you. We have one follow-up question from Councilmember Carlton.
First of all, thank you for all the great work you do.
Thank you.
No one, I think, can overstate how important libraries are to a community. You mentioned the Little Free Library. I love those. Every time I see them, you know, some of them are so cute and so well-designed, and I live on a corner, I've always wanted one. First of all, I think it's great. I think it would be a fabulous idea to have one strategically in various parks, where we've got benches where people can sit and read and enjoy that, even maybe in dog parks, people would have dog books they put in. I think that's fantastic. Where does one get one of the Little Free Libraries? Do you have to build one yourself, or is there someplace where they're available?
You can, you can purchase kits off the Internet. There are plans that are available. Some of these kits are $300 with instructions. Get some Boy Scouts on a weekend, and I mean, these things fly together. There's also ones.
Boy Scouts, that's a good idea.
There are some really expensive ones, like rocket ships, and, you know, all sorts of really cool, creative, just sort of like inspiring designs that they come in. And I think there, I think there's really cool ways we could sort of bring in the history of Menlo Park to some of these, or just tech, you know, you name it. We could have all sorts of different themed ones, and I think that it's a no-brainer.
Great, thank you.
So before I say thank you, actually, we have a public comment on this item, which is from Pamela Jones, if you'd like to come up.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers and staff. And your report is really exciting. Having attended a number of your meetings and being somewhat vocal, it was really a delight. They had their meeting over at the Bellhaven Library this past, their past meeting, and there was probably about, I don't know, ten, fifteen community members there. And it, you know, it really does bring a sense of community when any of the Commissions, you know, come there. I'm really excited to see the level, how they have managed to maintain the very high level for the Bellhaven Library. That's very encouraging. I did want to note is that the Bellhaven Neighborhood Library Advisory Committee, I always have to think about that, is having their first meeting tomorrow evening at 6:30 at the Bellhaven Library. And that's really exciting. I had been emailing, asking when this would occur. The challenge, though, is that the Bellhaven Neighborhood Association meets at the same time over at the Senior Center. And since we have a host of things that we need to discuss, it's going to make it challenging for residents to decide which one they're going to attend. So I'm looking forward to meetings in the future, a good recap of tomorrow's meeting, and then the meetings in the future that we make sure that they do not conflict with things that are going on in the community. And the one last thing I want to say is I am going to have a Little Free Library at my house. I've been talking to Jackie Sebrian, she's very helpful. You can buy them pre-made, and look at getting them in bulk, like five or six, and encouraging other neighborhoods to also put them up in part of the Bellhaven Mini Grant. So a lot of things happening, and it has really come from this Library Commission, because they have been steadfast in their duty. And so thank you all again.
Great. Councilmember Keith.
Thank you. Hi, thanks for your update on the Library Commission. And I, we've all, I've been talking to Jackie also about the Little Free Libraries, and one thing that, a place that we, that would be fabulous is Hamilton Park. And I brought it up last year with our City Manager, and there was some question about putting it on city property. So I think it would be great to put one up there, and we just have to work through that, if there is any issue with that. But I do support that, and I think it would be fabulous. And then there was an email from LJ Anderson that came in, I think, today, but asking about that grand opening and other things. And so just to be clear, the grand opening is, it's February twenty-fifth.
February twenty-fifth, I hope I said that.
Yeah, I just, I think you said the twenty-fifth, and I just wanted to say, February twenty-fifth, and the time is?
One to three.
One to three. So February twenty-fifth, one to three, wonderful grand opening. And then Mr. Anderson also had a couple of other suggestions that I thought were pretty good. He was talking about that there's no library sign that lights up in the dark, so it looks like the building is just, has lights on inside, but people might not know that it's open. So I think it would be great if we can get some, some kind of lighting outside so people know that, yes, it's, maybe even a sign that said, "Library Open," so people know that they can go in there. And then the other question was about the other extended hours on Thursday and Friday evenings, because now it's open until nine o'clock on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, but then the concern about, could we possibly do Thursday and Friday? And I think that would be an excellent thing to do as well. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
The library is very exciting right now, the whole library system. So thanks for your hard work there.
Any other? So thank you very much, and I'm really glad to hear that the attendance at the Commission meetings has been up, and I think that's great, that there's engagement. Oh, and we have another card from the library, from Adina Levin. Adina, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and Library Commission. And it was really interesting to hear that, first of all, really glad to see the additional hours and attention to the Bellhaven Library moving forward. And I was also interested to hear that in some of the thinking about potential change in the downtown library space, that one of the reasoning for that is the need for additional meeting rooms for community space. And it is possible that out of all of the space available for community activities in the various different buildings, the Ariaga, this, that, and the other, that, you know, they are all booked, all day, double-booked when people want them. However, if that is not the case, and, you know, you know, right now, there seems to be a fair amount of public space, and I am wondering whether our process of booking these public spaces is easy, available to residents. I know that there was some time a few years ago where there was an interest in maybe generating revenue, and the process for booking space became significantly more bureaucratic, and you need to know, like, a little bit too much about how to get things done in order to book a room. And if there is a room, if there's a reason to have something that could incur tens of millions of dollars of cost to the community, perhaps there might be something that we might consider in the interim in terms of making it easier to book public space that is available to our community even now. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Adina. And actually, Adina's comment made me think of a suggestion, Grayson, which would be, each time I go over to, you know, Mitchell Park in Palo Alto, their library and civic center, community center that they built just recently, I think it was about three or four years ago, also forty thousand square feet. It's very vibrant, lots going on. I would certainly encourage the Commission to find out what they're doing, because that might mesh well for what we're thinking. I know it's consistent with what we have in the library needs study, but just from that standpoint, and was reminded by it, because a lot of the space is community space. It's more of a, you know, community center as much as a updated library. So I would encourage that, because that's just something that people can actually visit and see, and is a really nicely-done example of what, of what a 21st-century library and community centers can be. So anyway, I thought I'd mention it, but great work, and really appreciate it, and keep these reports coming. Thank you.
Peter, just to piggyback on what you said, I think that really is, what your suggestion is really right on, because if you go and look, if you haven't seen Mitchell Park Library yet, it's so close, and you can see, you're right, Peter, it's just a great example of what a community center slash library can be, and.
It's very welcoming, it's also, and it's just a lot of activity going on there, a lot of good programming and activities.
And then also to Adina's point, I think Derek Schwiegert or Sherice Brandal can also tell us about vacancies and lack of space at the recreation center, because I don't, Derek, I see you here now, I'm not going to ask you to come up now, but I think that that information's readily available about how well-used our rooms are at the rec center.
Great. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, why don't we head to Parks and Rec? Parks and Recreation Commission Quarterly Report. Commission Chair Tucker Stanwood, good evening, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thanks again for letting me come give you an update. Our Commission really does appreciate all the work you do and all the support that you give us, and we hope it is reciprocated, because we are working hard, and at this present time, we're starting out the process of focusing on the Park and Recreation Facilities Master Plan. Most recently, we reviewed a proposed community outreach and engagement plan, how to communicate with the community in order to get feedback on what the community would like our parks to be able to take care of in their life plans. We certainly, in the proposal that was presented to us, we had general approval of the approach, forming a oversight and outreach group. We did have a few tweaks to make to that, and also the areas where we feel the community should be contacted. A number of us feel pretty strongly that it's not only the users of the parks who should be consulted on what the parks can do. Certainly, people who already use the parks find some, something useful about them. And we all feel that there should be some effort made to reach the people who are not using the parks. And in that extent, my personal feeling is that we need more youthful feedback. This master plan is something in the future, and these oversight committees typically, I wouldn't say the members are as old as I am, but they're certainly got a few rings on their tree, and it would be nice to have a fresh look, because I think what kids want is changing pretty dramatically. So hopefully, the outreach plan will, in that area, who we, how we're contacting people, but also who we are contacting. Another area where we would ask to have some future input, in the news, we all noted the, I'm sure it's still in infancy, but the idea of remodeling the Guild Theater into a more intimate site for events in the city. I think we see a lot of programs that, for which the Performance Arts Center is simply not appropriate. It's not intimate, not small enough, it's just overwhelming, the audience is too far from the stage, those kind of things. And I think we're pretty excited about the Guild being an opportunity to provide some sort of community services, some venue. sort of community services, some venue for smaller groups to put on programs. So we hope that the council will engage the Park and Rec Commission, and when you're looking at that proposal, when it does arrive, and ask for some input from us. In this last quarter, I think probably the most enjoyable event that I've had in my four years on the commission was the dedication of the Carl Clark Park. It started, we received the first presentation from the community about a year ago, and it was fun to see them come back and grow in their community involvement, grow in their spirit about the project. And the presentation, or the event itself, when the park was dedicated, I was, actually, I don't get moved too easily, except maybe when Stan Musial died, he was my hero, if you don't know who he is, as a baseball player, but I was really moved by the emotion and the eloquence of the residents of the neighborhood, the Belle Haven neighborhood, and telling and recounting the stories of Carl Clark. I know you had the experience here when the presentation was made here, and we enjoyed it when they met with our commission. But I just wanted to say how enjoyable an event that was, and it would have been nice to even have more people experience it. In our other area that I want to talk to you about is the projects of interest to the commission, ongoing projects, things that were waiting to happen. I think this is my third or fourth time here, and I always am bound to mention the bathrooms at Jack Lyle Park that have been approved, and that someday I hope that they'll, I'll be able to come and say that they're actually being installed, but I know there've been a number of logistical and product problems, in addition to not being able to find contractors anymore. But the areas where we are interested are in the dog park issues at Willow Park. We're very anxious to get that dog park remodeled, as we've gone down the road and come up with a pretty good plan. And also at Nealon Park, I spoke to you about Nealon Park last time. I think we're now, I know on our commission, we're engaged in looking at how the maintenance efforts, the extra maintenance efforts are going and preserving the sports field from the negative impact of the dogs. But I really do hope that either in our master plan process or in some other presentation before the council, that we will be able to revisit a location at Nealon Park that provides more extended hours for dog users. Having an eight to 10 o'clock, two hours a day, dog park and a sports field is, to us, not the best solution, and we're hoping that the community feedback from the temporary dog park and the information we'll get over time as to how the current sports field is handling the dog park there. It would be interesting to follow up on that as time comes. The other area that we're particularly interested in, right from the start, when I, at least when I came on, was getting parks and all, or bathrooms in all the parks. We have, as I mentioned, Jack Lyle, we've gone through the process, and I believe that's been approved. We're also anxious to get the bathroom at Willow Park. And from my own personal opinion, we've gotten some comments from the community that we need to spend a little more time looking at what I regard as one of the real jewels in the city is Sharon Park, the pond there. It's a beautiful pond, but it very easily falls into disrepair if it's not washed all the time. And the vegetation in the park suffers from time to time from lack of maintenance, and we've had a number of comments. But it's one of the largest parks in the city to not have a bathroom. So I'm hoping that soon that will come before us as a proposal to have a bathroom. And I would just want to say that in all the things we do, this is one time where I hope our efforts will go to waste.
Great, thank you, Tucker. Hey, I did want to ask just a question about whether, you know, dog parts or dog parks are part of the master plan process itself, and, you know, just included.
Absolutely.
So that will be part of that.
Absolutely, and I believe that's one of the designs, is that the Nealon Park issue will be dealt with in the master plan process. And so, we hope by November, when the plan comes up for approval, that we'll have some feedback and have some opinions that will give us what we hope is a better solution than we have now.
Great, wonderful. I think councilmember Keith.
Thank you for your update. It's always great to hear what you're doing with Parks and Rec. And one thing I would love to see, when you're going through the master plan, is to look to see if we could do the Magical Bridge Playground somewhere. And I had a conversation with a couple of other park commissioners about that, too, and that if there was a location we could identify for a Magical Bridge Playground, that would be really exciting. And if people want to see one, there is one in Mitchell Park, actually, in Palo Alto, that's been there for a few years, that's really lovely. And the other thing I just want to throw out there is perhaps looking at agility courses for dogs. There's one in Redwood City, right by the train tracks, and I've taken my dogs there a few times, and they really like it, but it's just something that would be kind of fun if we found a spot to put one in, and I don't think it takes a lot of space. Thanks.
Well, just in reply, on the Magic Bridge, we had a presentation on that particular park. We saw pictures, we have two members of our commission that are on a subcommittee that are dealing with the playground upgrades, which I hope will get some pretty high priority as time goes by, and I know that's one of the things they're looking at.
Great.
On the agility dog park, you know, I'm sorry, I'm a cat person, but
Love cats, too.
I'm going to Redwood City Theaters, I go that way, and I've admired that park. I thought, what a great idea. It's pretty small.
Yeah, it's very small.
But we actually included that question as part of our outreach to the community when we were looking at the Willow Park, Dog Park. And actually, got very low scores. I would, I'm with you, I think it's a great idea, at least a portion of a future dog park have an agility course on it. But I share your interest.
And the other thing, people are writing and asking for more benches.
Yes, benches have been a very popular request and shade.
Yeah, okay, good, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Vice Mayor Mueller.
Yeah, so just real quick, on the Guild project, last year, when Peter and I were negotiating the Stanford proposal, I had a pretty good idea this would be coming forward, and we actually inserted to it that they would be, that Stanford would go ahead and help us with the speaker series for the Guild at that time, and they orally committed to that, but said they, because they didn't have control over the Guild, they couldn't commit to it in writing. Well, it may be in the future, now that we will have some control whether they could do that. So if you guys could go ahead and work with city staff to go ahead and put together, if that project were to be approved, sort of a framework of how we could work with them and get input from the Park and Recreation Commission as to what speakers would be great, that would be really, really useful.
All right.
Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Carlton.
Hi, thanks so much for all the great work that you do, and please convey to the whole commission our thanks. And in a similar vein, way too many years ago, when I was on Parks and Rec, I had done outreach to the people that owned the Fox Theater, and they were also interested in expanding out some of the programming that they had. So that's something else to take into consideration, that you might get back in touch with the owner. He's a very nice person, and he was raised in Menlo Park, so I think he would be delighted in doing something as well.
Thank you, yeah. One of our project goals now is to find new venues. I heard the last speaker, public speaker, talk about space in the city buildings for activities, and I think we've found that they're pretty well-occupied. And so, one of our goals is to try to locate new space so that we can expand some programs. I think it's a need in the city, and the library would be a great source of additional space, if that's possible.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tucker. Janelle, welcome back up. Is the server, I hope, working for the slides?
We're getting there.
So we'll now have the Environmental Quality Commission report with Chair Janelle London.
All right, I'll be doing an interesting song and dance today, as I'll be looking certain ways and doing this and that to move the slides, but if you guys can look, look at the screens there, exit rows are on these sides. Okay. Oh, you can see it there. Okay, great. So I just need to look over there. Oops, it's gone. All righty. Anyway, I'm glad you guys can see it. Oh, now everyone can see it. Okay, perfect. Thank you all for your support from one volunteer group to another. We so appreciate what you guys do and your amazing leadership in Menlo Park. Our environment, both our air quality, the beauty of this city, and our climate are in pretty good shape, thanks to you guys. Our work is certainly not done, but we appreciate all that you guys do to support our efforts to make this city the beautiful place that everybody wants to be. Next slide, please. So just want to remind you of the commissioners who serve at your pleasure. Next slide, please. And our priorities for these couple of years, we're at the end of our priority years already, I can't believe it, but just to remind you, they are to work on the Climate Action Plan, Sustainable Development, and preserving our urban canopy. Next slide, please. So on the Climate Action Plan, I just want to keep ever-present in our minds that our goal, the goal that this city council set up, is to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions by 27% below our 2005 levels by 2020. Our data is a little delayed, but as far as we know, we are on track. So we're excited but not resting confident yet. Who knows, we've had a lot of developments, so we may be off, but we are getting the data for you. Actually, that's one of the big items this year. And as we approach 2020, again, I think we're in good shape. We've got Peninsula Clean Energy, which you guys should never stop congratulating yourselves on. That is quite an achievement for the County of San Mateo, and we are headed towards 100% renewable energy, the commitment is by 2021, so that is pretty darn exciting. The Zero Waste Plan is underway. Our fabulous staff at the Office of Sustainability is making sure that that happens. We have in place a fabulous green and sustainable building code in the M2 area that we'll talk about in a second. And I know that we and you are focused on electrifying our transportation, seeing that that is the single biggest source of our carbon emissions, and looking towards electrifying that. So I want to thank you all for that. And then, again, beyond 2020, we're starting to look at what will be our new goal, our Climate Action Plan goal, and just know that the state's goal is that our emissions are 40% below 1990 levels by 2030. So we'll have something pretty darn ambitious ahead of us, even if it's just to barely exceed what the state's requiring. Next slide, please. So in terms of transportation electrification, as you guys, I think, are aware by now, Menlo Park holds a very esteemed place as number four in the state as far as our adoption rates for electric vehicles, so that's great. And we've advised you guys on some ideas for how to get to number one, and you have willingly grabbed those, you've initiated some of them, so I think we're all together on this idea, but they include infrastructure requirements in the building code, so we're thrilled that you guys are pursuing things that are more stringent even than the state requires. Thanks. Oops, one back a slide, please. Another area is, and we've recommended this to you again, is streamlining that permitting. So for solar panels right now, a Menlo Park resident has the fees waived, and we think that that could be a good idea for electric vehicle charging infrastructure, like in homes. Speeding it up, making it streamlined, and possibly making it free. And then, an EV-first city policy would be a great way to, to the extent feasible, as we're replacing our city fleet, start thinking, hey, how can we do this in a really sustainable way? Just to set a good example for our residents and show that we're walking the walk as well as talking the talk. And then finally, education. We've talked about making sure that our residents know about electric vehicles and know the opportunities. So, next slide. For instance, when you go onto cargurus.com and look for electric, used electric vehicles in our area, you may be surprised to find, and when we educate our residents, they may be surprised to find, that you can pick up a used Nissan Leaf, all-electric vehicle, for as low as $4,500. There's some good used electric vehicle deals out there, so we're starting to combat the myth that electric vehicles are not affordable. In fact, as the used vehicle market grows, they are becoming affordable. Next slide, please. And when, we want to also, the EQC is continuing to work to educate our residents, that when you combine an electric vehicle with rooftop solar, you're talking about affordable housing in a whole different way. Your electric bills are going down to almost nothing, and your fuel for your car, which is for many families, 20% of their household bills, is going down to probably close to nothing. So those are important things that we want to educate about. Next slide, please. On Sustainable Development, again, we are so thrilled that you guys were able to get through the Sustainable Building Code for the M2 Bayfront area, and we have recommended, and you guys know that we think that the downtown specific plan update might be a great opportunity to extend that green standard, that highest green standard that we now have in part of the city to another big part of the city. And then for electric vehicle charging infrastructure, again, on the new construction, we've written a couple times, and if I could leave you with one message about that, it's go big. We have Palo Alto right next door that since 2014 has had in place a building code that literally provides for new multi-unit developments, one charging port per unit. So they are really ready for the future. We should be, too. We've got these neighbors, they're ready to help us out with letting us copy their code if we want. And then for existing buildings, you know, that's a tough nut to crack. How do you structure that, to start putting electric charging into existing buildings? And we think that further study's appropriate, and we've offered up some of our EQC funds to help with that. Next slide, please. Finally, urban canopy preservation. Next slide, please. So, you know, we do the Heritage Tree Appeals. We did one of them this quarter. It was painful, like all they are, like they almost always are. So we're hoping that this new Heritage Tree Ordinance update happens this year. We do have the consultant in place, so this, it all looks like systems are go, and we're really hopeful to have the Heritage Tree Ordinance updated by the end of this year. That's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you, Janelle. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Definitely, great work, and we appreciate it as always, so, thank you.
Okay, I think we'll go back to the presentation, which, are we good on?
Yes, we can display the presentation.
Would you like to do a short, or an intro as it's coming up? Nicholas?
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor, good evening, councilmembers, members of the public. My name is Nicholas Yee. I am the Transportation Demand Management Coordinator for the city of Menlo Park. So in other words, I basically oversee our city shuttle program, our city employees' commute benefits, and some of the tasks I'm responsible for will be forming a Safe Russell School Program, along with Transportation Management Association, which I'll be presenting to you tonight. I guess we're ready to go? Okay. So I'll be referring to the Transportation Management Associations as TMAs, just from here on out. And just as a beginning, before our presentation, I'm going to introduce Rebecca Lucky, who's our Sustainability Manager, to show how TMAs will fight both congestion and also help reduce greenhouse gas emissions.
Good evening, Mayor Otaki, and councilmembers. I just wanted to steal a minute from Nick to make a shameless plug on how the potential impact of Transportation Management Association, or TMA, could have on forwarding the city's Climate Action Plan goal to reduce greenhouse gas emissions 27% below 2005 levels by 2020. Although we are well situated to meet this goal, as Janelle had just explained, thankfully, because of programs like Polenta Clean Energy that provides at least 50% renewable energy to residents and businesses, we still do really struggle on figuring out how to influence the, or reduce emissions from gas-powered vehicles, just because there's limited leverage that local government has in this area. And many of the strategies proposed previously in the Climate Action Plan include anti-idling policies, social marketing and behavior change campaigns to get people to either walk, carpool, bike, or take the train, and these could be And these can be quite cost-intensive and resource-intensive as well. And as you know, we are working toward expanding the electric vehicle charging station requirements citywide, which will definitely help reduce greenhouse gas emissions as more renewable energy comes, becomes available, and will incrementally change the, our carbon footprint probably over the next few decades. However, creating a TMA has the potential to make a substantial short-term gain in reducing greenhouse gas emissions. And if explored thoroughly and established, it could help in exceeding the city's reduction goal. It could be more cost-effective and efficient than other strategies for you to consider. The Environmental Quality Commission in their January meeting had advised that the development of a TMA was a priority because of its ability to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And lastly, over the course of my career, I've been asked many times, you know, what's the silver bullet to addressing climate change? And while there really is no silver bullet, at least not yet, this is the type of program that has the potential to make, to make up a good chunk of that silver bullet and see results in less than 10 years. So it's definitely something worth considering against other factors in the community. And with that, it's my pleasure to be working with Nick, because he's obviously making my job a whole lot easier by taking this on, and I will hand it back over to him. Thank you.
Thanks, Rebecca. So with that in mind, as we begin our presentation, please keep in mind that Transportation Management Associations are powerful tools to combat not only congestion but also reducing greenhouse gas emissions in the city. So tonight, I'll give you a background about TMAs or Transportation Management Associations, the need for a TMA in Menlo Park. We'll look at Palo Alto's TMA as a case study, as a parallel potentially to ours in its formation, and some next steps for proceeding forward. So what exactly is a Transportation Management Association? So a TMA is basically an important element of transportation demand management, so I'll refer to transportation management as TDM from here on out, so essentially it's just another way of saying, how do we take a multimodal approach to transportation? Instead of just driving, how can we get people to ride transit, shuttles, bike to work or school, walk, carpooling, et cetera? It's just taking a multimodal approach to transportation instead of just thinking about driving alone. Essentially, a TMA is a coalition of businesses that has a public partnership, so a way to think of it is almost like a downtown business association where you have member agencies participating together for common good. These are usually independently run. There's a board of directors, and there's a variety of funding sources, such as, in Palo Alto's case, they have funding from the city council. They also have the member dues, the annual member dues, and that's how they run the organization. So what does a TMA usually offer typically? So typical things that a TMA can offer is shuttle service, such as here in the picture, this is a picture of a shuttle from Mission Bay in San Francisco. There are also advocates for congestion relief, getting transit benefits such as, say, transit passes for Caltrain, Dunbar Express, other transit agencies. And in general, they're basically an informational resource for people to go to and figure out how to commute without a car. So some local area examples of TMAs that currently exist are in Emeryville, the Mission Bay one in San Francisco, as I just had mentioned. There's a TMA of San Francisco, and then ones closer to home are in Mountain View and Palo Alto. So what's the need for a TMA in Menlo Park? So as kind of was alluded to before, we need to figure out greater efficiencies and economies of scale, so we could possibly combine multiple shuttle systems that independent employers have into one system for better efficiency. We can advocate as a whole to get both discount transit passes for, say, the Caltrain Go Pass, ones that don't exist currently for, say, Samtrans and Dunbar Express to help alleviate congestion along Dunbar Corridor. And in general, we can help streamline administration and oversight. You don't need five of me overseeing programs for each independent employer when you can just have one or two. And as was alluded to before, these help support city programs and policies such as the Connect Menlo General Plan, which calls for a TMA in the Bayfront area. There is the Ocamino Real Downtown Specific Plan, which also alludes to creating a TMA. And as was mentioned with Rebecca and the EQC, transportation does constitute a large percentage of greenhouse gas emissions. As you can see in the pie chart there, it constitutes for 40% of the greenhouse gas emissions in the City of Menlo Park, which is a significant amount. So we could look into doing regional collaborations. So one thing that currently exists is commute.org, which is also known as the Peninsula Alliance. So we could join commute.org, as has been mentioned in the past, so that could help take off the load of some of the things I do, so possibly they could take some of the shuttles that we operate, such as the Martian Willow, and that would give us a little more bandwidth to actually pursue the TMA, to actually think of more local issues that are at hand. Additionally, we can also look into mid-peninsula coordination of other cities, as Palo Alto and Mountain View already have a TMA. They have similar cultures and city types compared to us. And River City is also at the same stage as us in starting to form their own TMA. So we could possibly have a mid-peninsula alliance of these cities. So getting on board, where are we currently? So we have $100,000 that was given to us as seed money from Facebook to help the study, help create a study of a TMA in the city. So we're looking at potential businesses to start the initial TMA, such as Bohannon, Facebook, and Charlton, because these are large employers in the Bayfront area. They are kind of perceived as creating a lot of congestion potentially, and one of the good things is that they already have a lot of robust alternative transportation programs, which would be a good starting point. And as another part of redevelopment in the Bayfront area, it's mandated that any redevelopment would be required to participate in a future TMA. So next, I'm going to talk about the Palo Alto TMA as a case study, just give some examples of how they were started, and some of the challenges they went through, and some of the solutions, and how that could be applied here in Menlo Park. So the Palo Alto TMA is essentially a nonprofit made up of local businesses and institutions. They focus mostly on the downtown area versus, say, larger employers, and one of the things they want to do is expand to, say, the California Avenue Corridor, so it would actually have a kind of parallel and similar downtown-type businesses. One of the things, or some of the things they do right now is offer free transit passes to their members and subsidize carpools via the Scoop app. So how was the Palo Alto TMA established essentially? So basically, there was a city council goal in 2015 to reduce single occupancy vehicle trips by 30% over the next few years. So just to give you perspective, single occupancy vehicle rates in San Mateo County, California, the United States as a whole range at 70% to 80%. So that would be taking that down to about 50%, which is a very significant number. Some of the keys to creating this TMA was also that the city was leading the development of the TMA. It's not just, we hope that it will happen organically with employers and companies talking to each other, but we actually had to lead the effort in order to get it started. And also, the TMA does receive funding from the city in order to help its operational costs. The way they got started, essentially, they needed to conduct a survey to quantify all the commute habits, and once they got the data, they anticipated their main goals as being offering transit passes to the members, subsidies through carpools, and actually focusing on lower-income workers, which constitutes a large number of employees in downtown Palo So some of the initial challenges for creating their TMA from the get-go were the law, the 30% SOV reduction goal. There's a lot of pessimism of a program to reduce SOV. There's a lot of naysayers saying, oh, this can't happen. This will fail. What's the point? There's also reaching economies of scale with a lot of smaller businesses versus, say, a Bohannon, Facebook charging coming together, but you have small businesses, say, maybe 50 or less employees coming together in downtown Palo Alto. And in general, you just need to have TMA and TDM coordinated with one another versus being separate entities that relate to transportation, dictating different policies. So we need a symbiotic relationship. So some of the solutions to these challenges and lessons learned is that essentially, they needed a survey to, or sorry, they needed to be flexible. There are a lot of naysayers, but you need to be optimistic and have faith in the process. It's not going to happen overnight. There's no silver bullet, per se, but maybe this is a step in the right direction. You need a survey to quantify these commute patterns and trends. Metrics and data are key to proving the viability of our project. And in addition to the data, you need the support of the council and city employees to help drive the efforts, whether in just general support or financial backing. It's not self-sustaining quite yet. The city still helps fund things here in, or helps fund the TMA through parking fees that are levied in downtown to help compensate for getting people into downtown without having to drive, but hopefully they hope to be self-sufficient in a couple of years. But the biggest key takeaway here is that they reduced SOV rates by 8% in the first year with 30% goal attainable in five years. So just to give you an example, Seattle has a similar program where they want to reduce SOV rates by 30%, and they're anticipating a return rate in about 10 years. Stanford University, which also has a very robust TDM program, alternative mode offerings to their employees and students, set a similar goal, and they reached it in about 10 years. And they're at about 50% SOV rate now, too. So it is a lofty goal, but it is attainable if you just reach for it. So next steps. So here's our proposed course of action. We're looking at, we're looking at options analysis that are needed for TMA formations, so we have the seed money for Facebook to investigate different options in forming a TMA. So these options include a large business TMA, which, like I mentioned before, constitute large employers, like, say, Facebook, Charlton, that already have these type of robust TDM programs to get the initial program started. We could also look into a large and small business TMA, so one that might focus on the Facebook-type businesses, but also one that focuses on small downtown businesses to also get them cost-efficient ways to offer transit passes or alternative modes for their employees. We could look into a citywide TMA that offers its members, or offers membership to both large and small businesses. We could look into an alliance of Menlo Park TMA or TMAs in general, or even alliance with other cities, and this would help parallel similar efforts of TDM coordinators like myself working with other ones in different cities, the Manager Mobility Partnership, and TMAs in general. And I guess the best, the best way to get started is just having a survey to survey the results, or to survey how the commute patterns are in Menlo Park and how people commute here. The biggest thing is also gauging employer interest in this program, because we need employer buy-in to make this a successful one. And with this data, we can actually present different ways to evaluate TMA options. So our anticipated timeframe is looking at about 18 months, and we'll present milestones along the way to council to get any further guidance or feedback. And just moving forward at this point, so some questions for you are, are you comfortable with this options analysis approach? And what are some of the specific criteria we should consider in weighing various TMA options? So things like overall cost, time to implement, government efficiency and participation, employer buy-in, greatest greenhouse gas reduction, the greatest cost benefit for different mode shifts, and mode shift goals in general. And that's it. Thank you.
Great. Nicholas, thank you. And Rebecca, also thank you. Elena, do we have any questions or public comment on this particular?
We do have one public comment.
Okay. So Adina, Adina Levin, and will be first, followed by Diane Bailey. Hi, Adina.
Good evening, Adina Levin, and I serve on the Complete Streets Commission on a multimodal subcommittee that addresses TDM and also involved in a nonprofit that supports TDM in the region. And, let's see, so glad to hear this moving forward after city council has set this policy a number of years ago, and it's really exciting to see this going ahead and taking the next steps. And having served on the advisory board as Palo Alto TMA was getting started, it's great to hear about how they are, you know, in part serving as a role model for us. A couple of thoughts about this, you know, one is that the trajectory that they went on where, you know, people started out and said, this does not pertain to me, and then, you know, where they are now realizing that this is something that is really a benefit to them to attract and retain employees and is something that is valued, has been a good process. One of the things that they learned from doing the survey is that our, some of our, you know, we know that some of our larger employers like Stanford or Facebook do a great job at helping people get out of cars, but people in smaller companies, and particularly service workers, but also like somebody who works for an accounting firm and so on, they don't get the same kind of benefits that people at big companies do, and there's a huge correlation with the benefits that you get, and then the transportation choices that you may avail yourself of. So this can be extremely valuable to be able to democratize those kind of benefits. One insight about the funding with Palo Alto is that they made the decision, last April, I think it was, to increase the fee for the monthly parking permits and use that as TMA funding. And I'm hearing that described as like a stopgap move, but that seems like a really rational funding structure, particularly for a downtown area where you don't have really large employers. And, you know, what that does is it also balances the financial incentive between, you know, what's your out-of-pocket cost to drive your car and what's your out-of-pocket cost to use some kind of alternative. They also do have a lower-cost parking permit for low-income workers, so they're giving people a break who need it. One thought about the structure here is to maybe have one organizational structure, but really quickly, it's important to have operating areas that focus on a particular geography, because like downtown doesn't need shuttles, transit passes will help. There's different needs depending on where you are, so focusing on that is good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Adina. Diane Bailey from Menlo Spark.
Good evening, Mayor Otaki and council members. My name's Diane Bailey. I'm with Menlo Spark. We're a local group working towards zero-carbon city and a more sustainable region, and I really appreciated the way Rebecca and Nick framed the formation of a TMA as being one of the most effective strategies to cut greenhouse gases and congestion. And as we see from neighboring Palo Alto, this can be done so quickly. It's really encouraging to see that Palo Alto was able to reduce car trips by 8% in the first year. And to me, that means there's an urgency and a timing issue that the more quickly that we can form a TMA here in Menlo Park, the more quickly that we'll see results on both of these fronts, where I think there's so much interest throughout the community in both reducing greenhouse gases and advancing climate actions, as well as congestion, which you guys hear about often. And that also speaks to the issue of the geography, making the TMA citywide and covering traffic throughout the city. And perhaps we need different strategies in different areas of the city, downtown versus the Bayfront or M2. But I think formation of a citywide TMA and then working out the specific neighborhood strategies can come second. We have a wealth of, excuse me, a wealth of local models to follow. We don't need to reinvent the wheel, and so I would really urge the city to move as swiftly as possible to form the TMA, get started, try some of these pilot programs, and really try to extend some of the successful programs at Stanford and Facebook and other companies to the lower-income downtown workers who just don't have access to all of the great alternatives to driving and all of those great programs that are at the larger companies, and who probably need that type of assistance, free or subsidized transit passes the most relative to the tech sector workers. So I hope that we can get this off the ground quickly, and we're here to support you, and I thank staff very much for working hard on bringing this to you. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Diane. Let's see, questions? I think, okay, Councilmember Clark.
Thank you. And I appreciate all the depth of the presentation. It's clear you've done this a few times and been around it. On the top, I think Adina hit on a couple of points that I was going to, so I won't repeat anything that she had spoken to, but some of the questions, like the subsidized, you know, ride share, you know, whether it's Scoop app, or if it's an Uber or Lyft, whatever it is. I'm curious, when it comes to, let's say, service employees and folks that are working, and restaurants are working at Walgreens, and people that in a lot of cases can't afford to live in the region, but they use transit, or they drive here right now, how effective without that would train and bus passes be? And when did Palo Alto figure out they needed to add that? Was that apart from the beginning, or was it something they realized as they went along that people still weren't using the passes as much? Or, because a lot of people don't live near the train stations, frankly. I think a majority don't, and so, and even bus access is difficult sometimes. Just curious.
Yeah, honestly, I don't know too many of the details, per se, but just from my general background, I would say one of the biggest issues in general is just the first background, I would say one of the biggest issues in general is just the first and last mile solutions or problems. So it's a matter of getting to the train. Say, for example, if you were to take the train, maybe you live in San Jose, but you're not near the Caltrain. So you would drive or take the bus. But one of the biggest things that if you could take the train, it's an option to having to drive on one on one in the congestion. So at least that way, there is an alternative to actually get to your work destination. So maybe you can't get from home to the train initially, but at least once you get to downtown and you're at work, just walk to your work destination. So I think there's a different variety of options that people will take because they'll obviously, everyone has a different commute mode or different commutes. You know, you'd be coming from San Francisco, you could take the train. You're coming from San Jose, you can take the train. If you're coming from, say, the hillsides, maybe you need to drive. We don't know who's coming from where exactly. So having a plethora of options gives people flexibility. So if you're not near a train, or maybe it's just easier, then maybe the carpool option is best. If you can take the train, then it's great because you're right there in downtown Palo Alto. Or in the case of maybe transit passes, you can offer the Dunbar Express so that can get people over the bridge and then down Willow Road more efficiently versus than coming in cars. And that's just another option. There's no one solution that will fit all. At least having a plethora of options will give you that flexibility to actually say, here, here's what's on the table. I don't know what your commute is. There's thousands of different possibilities. But here's the options that are on the table. And then this is the best that can hopefully work. And then we'll gauge it accordingly as we go along.
And then, and when you look at, so Adina brought up the idea of having, you know, the TMA be structured as, you know, regional, like, you know, focus on the downtown area to the train and then separately another area that may not be a train access. As Palo Alto went along, they, you know, they had it, they focused on their, obviously, the big pain, which is University Avenue and that whole area to the train station. Are they going to create that similar structure where they have a larger group that's overseeing two different, like, organizations of businesses? Or will it be a citywide type thing they're moving into? Have they talked about that?
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay, sorry. So essentially, with their expansion to oversee California Avenue, you would think of it as almost divisions of a single company in a sense. So you have ones that focus more on University Avenue, obviously has different issues compared to California Avenue. But there are parallels, too. So in Menlo Park, we had a citywide TMA. You can have, say, a large business division versus a small business division. Focusing on downtown is going to be obviously a different beast compared to focusing on the Bayfront area. There's different issues, different things at hand. Like Adina was saying, if you were looking at downtown, people would just benefit mostly from transit passes, taking the train instead of having to park. And that can help, you know, parking in general and maybe bring in more business to, you know, restaurants and retail in downtown. While in the Bayfront area, maybe you need to focus more on consolidating shuttles so that we can have less on the road if they're all basically going to the same area. And if businesses are open to it, if they're basically first and last mile solutions to and from the Caltrain station, open up to the public to also get people getting to get to the train station, too. So it also benefit residents in addition to just commuters that are visiting Menlo Park.
Does the funding go into a central pot that's allocated equally? Or is there a way to, I guess I'm asking, how much does the city subsidize early with small businesses to help when the larger businesses probably have systems in place and also have an idea of what that budget is and how they move people around more than the small? Is there is there a reason to split those from just a funding mechanism? So you focus on one versus the other? Or where does the city subsidy, I guess, come in? And where does it gravitate to?
I guess to use Palo Alto again, they their system, from what I interpreted correctly, for the board of directors in a sense, they kind of buy their position. So obviously, if you're a larger company, I think it was called Palantir, they contribute, say, $10,000 to the TMA as a member fee while someone like fills coffee that's on the board only contributes $50 literally from his own pocket. So it's kind of proportional, obviously, because if you have more employees, then you should pay for more in a sense. But same amount, too, it's not that it's going to be proportional benefits, though. So everyone benefits as a whole because the way to think of it is that it's not just if I pay more, I should get more benefits. The idea is that everyone should benefit. If it's a small business that has five employees taking the train, maybe these people are taking the trains instead of driving on the road. So for the person who's saying, hey, why am I subsidizing this person taking the train when I drive? Well, that's less cars on the road for that guy. So that means it's less congestion in general. So it's looking at as a whole that everyone would benefit. So it's just contributing money that is for the greater good of the whole city as a whole.
And then the last thing is characterize how the city subsidy works and what percentage that is. You said, you know, upfront, you kind of got a lead. And then the second question, then I'll just stand down is, can you also give me some more insight into how the alliances would work if Redwood City and Menlo Park, how would that differentiate or work?
I guess for your first question about funding, if I remember correctly, the city funds a decent portion of the TMA's budget. It's probably maybe at least 75%. But obviously, it's the trade off of this TMA is benefiting downtown instead of having to spend all this money on parking, building garages. This is the trade off. So I think it's going to benefit the city as a whole. It's both good for residents, visitors, employees in general. To your second question of how we would pursue different alliances, I think it's a matter of coming to the table and seeing what each city's problem is. So one of the issues is that how do we focus on, say, Menlo Park's issue versus the region as a whole? Because we can't be an island where obviously, we do have our own separate issues. But same amount, too, cities or people are traveling through our cities or to our cities. So it affects people in the region as a whole, whether it's from the East Bay, from the North or the South. So what can we do to work together? So possibly, it's creating similar policies at the city level so that we have a standard to actually use as a model for regional collaboration to scale up for the whole region as a whole, or even just be a model for various TMA alliances in the state or country. We could look into, say, possibly doing combined shuttle services where citizens were on the county line, VTA and Samtrans services end right here. So there's no incentive for me to try to take the bus if I live in Redwood City, but work in Mountain View, take the bus versus maybe we can actually have something that supplements Samtrans and VTA service. And then they can focus on more regional express lines. And that way, we can actually work as a cohesive whole to move people in the region.
Councilmember Keith.
Thank you, Nick, for your presentation. It's exciting to see, because we've talked about this for a while. So it's great to have it here and to note that it's one of our top five priorities for this year. So I do have a couple of questions. I was looking at, one of the things you're talking about is doing a survey. And I've seen some milestones in here in the Transportation Master Plan. But when are you thinking of doing the survey?
So basically, we're at the point where we want to reach out to, say, the larger businesses, get a sense of things. But in the parallel process, I'm working with different TMAs, TDM coordinators in different cities. And also, we need to basically take that information, create an RFP to get a consultant on board. And then we can actually conduct that survey to reach out to the various employers and companies in the city.
Okay. So just in looking at our staff report for future item, but under the TMA, by June 2018 finalized goals and performance metrics, is that, when would you, is that what you're talking about, having the RFP? Or when would you have the RFP? I'm looking at page 20 of the staff report, just because it talks about TMAs.
Great. Nikki Nagaya, Assistant Public Works Director. So I think the Transportation Master Plan milestones that you were mentioning, they show up in the staff report for item J1. The survey that Nick's talking about is a slightly different effort where we would actually look to do a statistically valid survey and outreach into business owners and local employees to get more detailed information about their commute patterns. So it is shown in the staff report for J1 on page 61, under the overarching goal of improving Menlo Park's multimodal transportation system. And then the specific item is creating the TMA. So it's about two thirds of the way down the page. So we were looking at milestones of releasing a request for proposals for consultant services for this effort, which would include the survey by the end of June and then moving forward.
This is on this page, right?
Sorry.
Are the milestones and the dates on this page?
On page 61, yes.
Is it possible, while we're talking, can you possibly bring it up on the screen? If not, I understand. But if you can, I think it'd be helpful.
We can try, but just given the technical difficulties that we were having earlier, we may want to keep answering questions while we work on that.
I'll keep asking questions. But, okay, so how does the TMA and the Transportation Master Plan, how are they working together? Or are they?
Yes. So they are two distinct efforts, but are complementary. So the way our team is structured, so Nick reports into the Senior Transportation Engineer, Kristi Ann Choi, who is leading the efforts on the TMP. And so those efforts, just by nature of how we're structured, are very closely coordinated. The TMP is going to, the goal of that effort is to provide more of the prioritized list of infrastructure projects and strategies. And the TMA could be one strategy that gets recommended as a high priority in the TMA. But this has been on the city's books for many years at this point. And so we're moving them in parallel. So that's why you see both milestones for the TMA itemized in the work plan item as well as the master plan.
So just, so I understand, just when, in looking at your schedule, would you think that you would have something to present to the community in a year and 18 months?
So for the TMA, yes, we're tracking about 18 months for what Nick had defined as kind of the results of the alternatives analysis and the recommendations on which model we'd want to move forward with. The TMP has a separate schedule, and so that's not contingent on this this particular effort.
Okay, right. And I see the TMP talks about by June 2019 adopting.
Correct. Yes, that's page 59 of the staff report.
Okay. So, all right, it's just interesting to see both of them here. And I just want people to, I want to understand, you know, that it is, it is a long process. It's going to take a year and a half probably to do this. And that there'll be public outreach on this as well. And then you have the, yeah, the moving forward. So those, I don't know if you, those are great questions to ask. I'm going to make a couple of comments. I like the idea of democratizing the benefits. I think, I can't remember who said that, if it was Diane Bailey or Adina. But I think that that is important. And I would like to see it as something that is citywide and not just in one area. And I would ditto that will probably need different needs depending on where it is. I like the idea also of looking at a lower parking permit cost available for some people that would qualify for it. I'll be curious to see how we are going to pay for it. I know some places charge for parking and that some, some of those fees go towards the TMA or the, yeah, the TMA. And as was mentioned, the parking permit helps provide funding for the TMA in Palo Alto, for example. So that will be interesting to see. With the money that we have, we have seed money you mentioned from Facebook, could that be utilized for a citywide TMA? Or is it utilized in one place?
So the seed money from Facebook was a part of the development agreement for the campus expansion for buildings 21 and 22 that are under construction right now. There were no particular, there was no particular definition about where in the city the money could be used, but it was outlined as a feasibility study. So really looking at the options of the governance structure, ongoing funding, how it actually functions administratively, how it can self sustain over time. All of those things could be considered in the context of the entire city.
Okay, that's, I'm just curious to know. And then the last thing, I know Peninsula Volunteers is also doing, you know, helping with ride sharing for our seniors. And it would be important to include them in, you know, reach out to them with any survey questions and make sure that they're included because they're doing a lot right now with the grant that they have to provide rides for seniors. Thank you. I appreciate it. Looking forward to this.
Great. I'll chime in with a couple questions and comments. First, hey, I'm looking forward to this. Anything, I mean, if Palo Alto generated eight percent, you know, savings reduction in single occupancy vehicle trips in the first year, that's a pretty great return in my standpoint in terms of being able to get traffic, improve traffic, reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And so I'm certainly excited about about moving forward on it. So you certainly have my support on it. Couple things that just came to mind. For the routes that you're planning to connect to Caltrain, whether it's from the M2 or on Sand Hill Road, I just ask, just make sure you time it with, make sure that it's timed for to for Caltrain's service. That may seem like an obvious thing, but I've asked for years Samtrans to do that. And they, I never get a straight answer from Samtrans on that. Do you time your buses to arrive at the station for when, you know, Caltrain's the different? And I never get, I've been on this council for several years. And I have great appreciation for Samtrans. But I think if you want to get the ridership, you want to make sure you're making it convenient for them to use it. So a second aspect, I mean, there is some additional funding. I know that when we were, that Stanford has come forward for $250,000 toward a Sand Hill Road TMA. I think that's helpful. I'm also thinking back years ago when, when the hospital, you know, negotiations and I believe Stanford had, had provided the city a transportation impact fee of something like $3 million, which was to be used toward shuttles. So, you know, there's, there's the potential to, I think there's some funding there that that might provide the seed funding for this. Final, let's see, what was, oh, yeah, final thought is sort of a stretch goal, which is as you're going through this process of planning, if you could reach out to our school districts. Because, you know, we have one major school district that doesn't have buses. And as Councilmember Klein knows, I was out on Carline Monday morning. And, you know, we got, it was great weather. We still had a lot of cars coming through. So and, and it may be more of a, for example, to help Hillview, because you've got students coming to Hillview that are, you know, that are out in the, you know, that are in the Willows or in other parts of the city that, you know, it's just really hard to truly bike on a regular basis. It's a long distance. It may be helpful to look at some of those, getting those, those students who are at that longer distance. And that might solve a lot of some of the, you know, morning drop off and afternoon pickup. And you might even be able to utilize capacity, meaning buses and drivers, before the actual peak commute times. And so to be able to, to work that out timing wise so that, and so I'd like to recommend that because I know a big source of traffic in Menlo Park is school pickup, school drop off. And as we are going to continue to keep doing safe routes and more bike lanes, it certainly would be helpful to have a alternative, which is shuttles for students as well. So I'd like to recommend that as possible as, you know, part of the study work to see if it might be viable and might be helpful. Vice Mayor Mueller.
Yeah, so great presentation. And I appreciate all my colleagues' thoughtful comments on it. The only thing that I'd add for consideration, basically on your guys' part, is that if it's going to go citywide, that I know it's a bigger lift. And so the one thing that I actually would suggest, if it's possible, is to do a phased in implementation. So you can pick the area of the city that you can go ahead and move forward with first that makes the biggest impact. And then circle back and do the others later. It doesn't have to all come forward at one time. I think that'll probably make it easier for you guys and frankly, help. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And we will look forward to updates on this. All right, next, we are at public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the city council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the city council once under public comment for a limited three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The city council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda. And therefore, the city council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to give general information. The first card we have this evening is Elias Blawi, followed by Jen Woolison. The first card we have this evening is Elias Blowie, followed by Jen Woolison. Elias, welcome.
Good evening. Elias Blowie, Menlo Park resident. A couple of comments. The first actually was not my principal subject matter, but maybe I'll note since you have it coming up in a later agenda item for the, for the council procedures and policies. So it's eight fifty-three PM, we're just entering oral communications. How much comment has been received by the public in three-minute segments realistically? In geometry back in high school, I always remember the guy going up to the board, kind of like your typical coach type, doing the proof and writing at the end QED with some glee. Well, QED in terms of how the time flows here and where the contributions and perhaps the allocations of responsibility are. I'd hope separately you'd get oral communications frankly a little earlier than an hour and forty-five minutes into a meeting is another subject. But in all fairness, let the public have their say. The reason I was here tonight was on a topic that I think has been of large interest to you, but it's a, it's a little bit circuitous. This is on the subject of license plate readers, on the one hand, your privacy or, sorry, your document retention policy, if you will, and safe cities. There was a story that's floating around currently in the Mercury News-related Publications Group that's taken over much of the Bay Area that says this, ICE tracking license plates using Bay Area companies' technology. The company is Vigilant Solutions. I have a suspicion that the license plate readers you have are ultimately feeding the database that is underneath this. The missing link I can't figure out from Google searches is how the agency or the entity your data flows up into, which is called NCRIC, Northern California Regional Intelligence Center, how that relates to this company Vigilant Solutions. Vigilant Solutions is capturing hundreds of millions to billions of license plate images. The Homeland Security Department has just signed a contract that gives them access to that. Well, of course, that's immigration. They conveniently published a Privacy Impact Update, December twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen. When you read this, what it reveals, and again, it's too complex to go over here in a couple of minutes, but in summary, my reading suggests, putting my lawyer hat on, you could drive a proverbial immigration bus through this policy. They figured out, what I noticed a couple of years ago, if you just take images of the data, guess what? There's no sixty- or ninety-day retention. This policy explicitly speaks to retention as long as seventy-five years, if you can believe that, in some circumstances. And it routinely speaks to five years. So I don't think you have the policy you think you have, and our data is probably being used for purposes we just don't support as a city. Thank you.
Thank you, Elias. And I think we'll look into that. Jen Woolison, followed by John Kidvani.
Jen, good evening.
Good evening, mayor, talking council members. I wanted to talk about the police for just a moment, the Menlo Park Police Department. First, I wanted to give a huge thank you and appreciation to Officer Mary Ferguson. She's a tremendous treasure to this community. I've seen her in, at Hillview, passing out water bottles yesterday to kids that were safely dismounting their bikes to cross crosswalks. And I've seen her in Bellhaven, where the kids tend to be weary of police presence, but they love Officer Ferguson. So she's a real treasure to the community. And also speaking of police, I know that you are hiring a new police chief. I don't want to add another criteria to the wish list of what we would want in a police chief, but I would be missing an opportunity if I didn't ask that the police chief, one of the criteria would be some safe routes lens. The concept of safe routes, you know, is relatively new, and to have a police chief come in and really be a partner in this effort, whether it's with the bike education or with creative enforcing in a more educational sense for the kids. So I know you're having staffing issues, and I would hate to give you a make it harder job, but I would be remiss if I didn't say that would be a great lens to look at also. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. John Kidvani, welcome.
Thank you, John Kidvani, College Avenue. Good evening, council members. I'm here to repeat the request I made in public comment at a prior council meeting, which is to please add to the districting advisory committee's deliverables their preference or indifferent, preference for or indifference to the five district versus six district plans, which they're working on, and the election sequencing. That comparison between the two parts that they're studying is not now an explicit product of the group's work. Having listened to the committee discussion, I believe they're working effectively to understand how districts work through a mix of residences, businesses, transit corridors, development projects, and city issues generally. The committee are people whose opinion I value and which I'd like to hear when they present their work for the five and six district options. Here's another reason it's important that the advisory committee give their views on the five versus six district choice. The five and six district plans involve different criteria, because only with a six district plan do we increase city council size and add an at-large mayor. The city needs to hear about the trade-offs and constraints involved. The advisory committee of all people in the community should be heard on the pros and cons of the two districting choices. Please make this task explicit in the list displayed on the city website. In addition, when you do hear from the committee, please feel free to ask them for the basis for their choices. Especially useful would be to hear the committee's views on what makes for a good district and good district council members reflecting both city and district roles and responsibilities. Thanks very much.
Thank you, John. Elena, do we have any other cards? Okay, all right. Next, we have our consent calendar. We only have two items tonight on the consent calendar. Do we want to pull, anyone want to pull? If not, a motion?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Great. We have a motion and a second to approve both items on the consent calendar. And as the screen comes up, okay, we can vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Great. Thank you. Now to regular business, item J1, which is to approve the twenty-eighteen to twenty-nineteen budget principles, city council procedures manual, and the twenty-eighteen city council work plan. City manager Alex McIntyre will introduce the item, and there's assistant city manager Chip Taylor will present. So Alex.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Yeah, so essentially I'm going to turn it over to Chip right away, and I'm going to do more of the cleanup on the end. So Chip Taylor, assistant city manager, those words don't flow as smoothly as they used to. Thank you, Chip.
All right, thank you. Good evening, council. So here for the twenty-eighteen work plan discussion and go through kind of a summary of what we've worked on so far to date and then what we're looking for tonight. So first, let's talk a little bit about the process. On January sixteenth, we kind of laid this out a little bit. More time for council to discuss these items over the month of January. So on January sixteenth, we brought forward the twenty-seventeen work plan and the milestones that have been completed for twenty-seventeen and some of those projects that would be rolling over. And then on January twenty-third, we started more of the preparation for the goal setting for the twenty-ninth by talking more about the budget principles, talking about the city procedures, city council procedures manual and some changes, some minor changes in both of those, some of the remaining and ongoing work plan items that would carry over, introducing kind of the list of the potential work plan items, things that we had heard over the year that council or the community wanted to consider to move into the work plan. And we solicited council feedback and got a lot of feedback that evening to help us for the twenty-ninth. So then on January twenty-ninth, the goal-setting meeting, one of the big things there is we did get a lot more public input than we normally get. Typically, we planned for a very short amount of time there, and we got probably about two hours of public comment. So it definitely was very positive, but it did scrunch a little bit of the time that we discussed the overall work plan. So one of the big messages there is that we had a strong fiscal health, so there's a presentation on kind of where the city is. So we're in a strong fiscal position. The biggest challenge that we have are with staff vacancies and really the capacity constraints that those staff vacancies create. We have the kind of the fiscal resources and the human resources, and the human resources where we're getting some of the more pressure there. We talked about some of the proposed amendments to the procedures manual, the city council procedures manual, and I'll go into a little bit detail when we get into a few more slides and then your staff report. We worked through some of those issues, but there's one issue that we still need to get some direction from council on this evening. And we really had three categories for prioritization. We had the priority work plan items, so we were looking for those items. We had about eighteen that would be more of our top priorities that we would make sure we put resources toward. We have the remaining and ongoing work plan items, so these are all of the other things that we would be working on throughout the year. And then again, we had those potential work plan items or new initiatives that potentially would be moved on to the work plan. And really, there would be, need to be a trade-off of something, and that was a lot of the discussion that council had, is trading off if something moves on to the work plan, what might need to move off of the work plan. And then ultimately develop the twenty-eighteen draft, the draft twenty-eighteen work plan. So I'll go back to the budget principles first. These are a few of the main high bullets for budget principles. The council, at the meeting of the twenty-third and the twenty-ninth, I think, seemed generally supportive of the budget principles. There's only one minor change with the overlap hiring. We changed the word to overlap hiring for when we have individuals that might be retiring, and we bring somebody in in the same position to be able to overlap those two people for a period of time to kind of transfer knowledge and efficiency. So I think those are fairly straightforward, and we would look for approval of those this evening. And then the procedures manual. Procedures manual had a few things that were proposed to be changed. The first was about remote meeting participation and that not, that council shouldn't feel compelled that they have to participate in those meetings. We changed some minor language on the twenty-ninth that's included in the packet. I think there was general consensus around that changed language there. There's one thing that's not up here is the reordering of the meetings. So we changed the manual to be consistent with the way that we actually do the meetings and how we order the meetings, so that was a minor change there. And then really, the bulk of the conversation was about late-night meetings and when they go later than eleven o'clock or midnight. We still had a discussion that we need from council about really the original language that's in the procedures manual that has a vote that occurs at eleven or maybe eleven-thirty to go past midnight, or whether there's some new language that's in there as option B for the council to consider. And then one last thing related to that is in the staff report, we do have some language that could be put on the agenda itself that talks about late-night meetings, just to alert the public as they're looking at the agenda as well. So then to go into the actual work plan itself. So the work plan, just to be real clear, is actually fifty items. So right now, there are fifty items on the work plan. We intend to make progress on all of those items. We do have milestones for those items. So those would all be moving forward, and I'll show you a list of those in just a moment. And then the council did go through an exercise to prioritize six of those items, and really the intent of that is to make sure that if there are any issues, that those items would stay on track, if there is some sort of extra project or some other capacity constraint that we might experience. And so here are all fifty items. Can't read them right here, but I just wanted to show kind of the bulk of the work that really is intended to move forward for twenty-eighteen. I've got these lists further in the back if you want to talk about any of the details of these. But again, when we move forward with the top six items that the council prioritized, the intent is that when something comes forward that we didn't anticipate, such as the Stanford GUP project, and that came forward and really took a lot of time and capacity from the city, that really we would make sure that those top six items, that we continue to put resources toward those so that those don't shift. But then it would give the city manager flexibility to adjust resources from some of the other items to make sure that those top six move forward. And likely, if we did have that unanticipated constraint, then we would have to slow down some of the other projects and make sure that we move the top six forward. But that's really only if we do have that capacity constraint. Otherwise, we're going to make progress on all fifty items, just like we have in the past with the twenty-seventeen work plan. These are the top six priorities. There are a little bit more detail in your staff report, just because we wanted to make sure that we got these right. I'll read these off real quick. Is the district elections, transportation master plan, which we heard a little bit about, the citywide safe routes to school program, which is really a non-infrastructure program, more about the education and encouragement kind of approaches to safe routes to school. We have the implementing the downtown El Camino Real specific plan biannual review. A lot of components with that, depending on where council wants to go. The downtown parking garage, kind of understanding further about what direction we might want to go related to downtown parking garage. And then the Guild Theater, which is really focused more on the land use entitlement approach that. It's a nonprofit who's moving forward with that, but there's a lot of heavy lifting that needs to be done related to the entitlement process and potentially some changes to the specific plan to make sure that that happens. So that's on there as well. And that'll be coming to you, actually, that's one of the ones that's going to be coming to you likely in February, is our first study session related to that. So with that, this evening, we're looking for approval of the budget principles, the city council procedures manual, which we do have the question on option A versus, versus option B for that one item, and then ultimately approval of the draft twenty-eight work plan as it's laid out in the council report tonight. And with that, I'll be open for any questions, and we've got department heads here, and then Alex may have a few words as well before we end.
Okay, thank you, Chip. Before, well, let's see. First of all, are there any clarification questions before we go to public comment? Because I'd like to get, I think we should go right to public comment, if that's okay? All right, great. Because I know we have a number of speakers. Greg Ferris is first up this evening, followed by Jen Woolison, and then Angie Evans. And Greg, great, and I think you have six minutes. You have time donated to you.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I have some slides, too. I don't know if they've made it through. No, they didn't make it. That's too bad.
And Greg, if you could pull the mic up, and would you like me to distribute these out to my colleagues here?
Yeah, there's no copies of the slides, but there's some related material. So I noticed on the agendas that said the triangle annexation, which I'm wanting to speak about, is specifically not on the work plan, and I'm speaking to encourage that it be included on the work plan. And I want to speak specifically to an issue in West Menlo Park. Menlo Park's cut in two by the county, all the way from one side to the other. There's a slight connection, I think you know, that goes around where the Stanford Golf Course is, where the creek goes on the other side of Sand Hill Road. So would like to see that gap closed, and I think there's many benefits across the community for that. And it's too bad that the slides aren't working. So I have a slide that shows what's happening in this region. Just imagine it. But the important things are, you have two major arteries going through this part of unincorporated Menlo Park. You've got the Alameda, and you've got Santa Cruz Avenue. You also have a business district. And so we're looking at the annexation of the triangle as the first step towards completing, closing the gap on the whole length. The benefits to the community include better coordination of traffic. And I've got some slides on this, which unfortunately I won't be able to show, but from our house, when I want to get out, I'm on Santa Cruz. In the morning, sometimes it takes me a minute to get out of my driveway. It doesn't sound like a lot, but it's much longer than you usually wait at a traffic light. Traffic's everybody's problem. As we see, like in the Willows with that traffic light on one-on-one, small changes can affect everybody. Those roads are controlled by the county. Menlo Park just deals with the consequences. So far, things are not terrible, but you don't know what can be, can happen at some later date, and annexation is not something that happens on the, on the spot. Safe routes to schools, pedestrians, and bicycle safety are all important. So safety has to do with reducing danger, and on the west side of Menlo Park, the danger is on these two streets. And so if they're in Menlo Park jurisdiction, Menlo Park can decide how to make those streets safe. Local governance is better, so currently we're represented by the county, and they've got a lot on their plate. Local law enforcement is better. We're policed by the sheriffs. It's not good to have regions that are sparsely policed. So you've probably read about what's going on in, or has been going on in Portola Valley. So the sheriffs, they, they don't have a lot to cover when they come over here, and it's a bit of a drive. So local law enforcement is better. Tree protection is better in Menlo Park. So in the handouts, I've flagged on the yellow tabs comparing Menlo Park tree protection with the county. So in Menlo Park, a heritage oak is a native oak that's bigger than ten inches. That's this big. In the county, a heritage oak, if it's a valley oak or a coast live oak, is forty-eight inches. So your tree has to be this big in the county to So your tree has to be this big in the county to be a heritage tree. Well, the county, I must say, in defense of the county, I mean, they're covering a lot of place. So I mean, in the coastal regions, in farm regions, in mountain regions, it's different. But we're urban. And the same thing goes for development. So the development rules apply for the whole county. It'd be nice if there was some consistency between this part of the county and the rest of Menlo Park. So I have some pictures in here in the slides showing a corner of the triangle region, 2099 Sharon, shows before and after the recent development, when one house was replaced with two. I might note that the county changed the rules for the whole county so that on certain corners, on certain sized streets, you could build two houses where you're only allowed to build one, which is kind of interesting. But in the before picture, it's covered with trees. In fact, if you stood on the street, all you saw were trees. You didn't know there was a house. Now it's all house. You don't know there's a tree. There is a little tree in there that was planted. So why the triangle? So I have a nice picture in the slides. You can probably find it also in those handouts, a picture of what it looks like. The triangle's surrounded on three sides by the county. In the narrow part, you can almost spit from one side of the city across the triangle to the city on the other side. There's five points on the triangle where you have different jurisdiction on different sides. I guess important things are, the county members want the support. I have a map in here that shows the level of support. There was a lot of canvassing to get grassroots support for this, hundreds of hours voted by the neighbors in this region. So eighty percent was support. The rest is neutral, or people couldn't reach them. There was one opposed. So let's see. I think there's lots of advantages to closing the gap. I think actually, in the long term, it'll be less work for the city, dealing with a single jurisdiction, rather than trying to coordinate between the county and the city to do even minor things. One bit of good news, I know, I've been told that there's quite a few emails that have been sent to you in support of annexation, trying to get this onto the work plan instead of off the work plan. And one of those emails, I was copied on, I found out that Lynn McClure said that Joe Lococo from the county said that the county will pay for the reconstruction of Sharon Road and the alley gutters, which I think is wonderful news, because that's one of the concerns, provided that it's managed with a contract consistent with county standards, which is quite appropriate. And I might note that the condition of the sidewalks in the streets, while they're not up to current Menlo Park standards, they're quite typical, actually, throughout Menlo Park. But you know, it's a new thing, so you want to look at, it's perfectly appropriate to look at it. All right, I want to say thank you for your time. Thank you for the job you do. The more I come here, the more I find out it's not easy, although tonight is a nice night. There's lots of wonderful things going on. But we look forward to closing the gap in Menlo Park. This is only the beginning. The triangle's just a part of it. But a journey of a thousand steps begins, of a thousand miles begins with a thousand steps. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Jen Woolison, followed by Angie Evans. Hi, Jen.
Good evening again. First, I want to start off by thanking you for prioritizing safe routes to school in the work plan. I do want to point out a few clarifications and questions that I have about the way it's phrased in the staff report. I realize that the Safe Routes to School Citywide Program is a program, and it's non-infrastructure. But I want to make sure that the infrastructure piece isn't completely thrown out the door with this program, because as we all know, that the ease of safe routes are all interconnected. And as this program is developed, it's very important that the program includes an infrastructure lens, meaning that walk and roll maps are one of the component of this program. Having the consultant look at all of the school sites is a really critical part. And Parents for Safe Routes put together a document that we presented to Nicky and to Nicky Nagaya of some of the ideas that we've cultivated over the last two years working in this field. And we also reached out to Sylvia Starlak at the Palo Alto Safe Routes Program, Chelsea Bilken and Cupertino, and Teresa Valles Kelly in San Mateo County Safe Routes about kind of what the best practices are to developing a safe routes program. Some of the key things that they mentioned was making sure that there is a staff person dedicated to safe routes. I'm very concerned, I know that you're short on capacity and the ability to hire, but hearing everything that Nicky has on his plate, I'm concerned about this being kind of just another little project that someone with already full plate is trying to handle, and that's something you should think about. If this is really one of your top five priorities, to really make it a top five priority. This also goes with clarifying the stakeholder meetings that are being discussed in the staff report. Is this once a year? Is this every quarter, every month? Obviously, the more effective of a safe routes program, the more often you want to be meeting with your stakeholders. And then also thinking about having a shared commitment document with all of the stakeholders for safe routes. There's contracts available online so that everyone is operating from the same understanding of what it is that they're creating together of a safe routes to school program. So I just want to thank you. I also, one more thing, is Menlo Park is very multi-jurisdictional, as the previous speaker mentioned. And I think you need to think hard about the boundary that you're drawing when you're creating the safe routes to school program. Are you looking just for city schools or kids that live in the city? As we know, our school district boundaries run across Atherton and county and city and everything. So I encourage you to really take a leadership position on this and hopefully bridge together some of these multiple jurisdictions, because I think it makes Menlo Park sense for Menlo Park to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Angie Evans, followed by Regina Schmidt.
So I also wanted to thank you all for listening to the two hours of public comments. It was a lot, and personally, I was like really excited to see that many people at a meeting like that, especially in the middle of the day. I think that shows that people in the community really care about what you all are doing, and so we appreciate that, you know, you're thinking through all of these options and prioritizing them. I wanted to speak on behalf of, I work for the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County, and so we were really glad to see the downtown specific plan and the parking lots come to the top of that priority list. We still hope to see housing attached to the library. I think it is, again, an incredible opportunity to build the truly affordable housing, the stuff that those very low-income RINA numbers that we don't meet, that we can meet them easily by building on public land. So I want to, again, emphasize that we really still care about that project. And I'd also like to see some kind of commitment. I know we're talking about those, the reason that we're excited about the parking lots still being there is because that's another opportunity to put housing downtown. And so I would love to see some kind of commitment when you're talking about rezoning to mixed use for that parking lot, to rezone it to include housing, because I think that's another great opportunity. And while I'm also personally really excited about the Guild Theater, I have a young family, like I like to go to concerts, I like to go to movies. I love the idea of not having to go all the way to San Francisco. But I also want to make sure that we really keep in mind the housing part of it, because if we're going to invest in the arts and theater, we have to have places for artists, for people who work there. We have to be able to do both together, or we're not going to be able to do either of them successfully. As you all know, work plans, budgets, I come from the budget background. So to me, I look at these things as moral documents. And so I just appreciate that you guys will really make sure you keep housing at the top of that. Thanks.
Thank you, Angie. Regina, Regina Schmidt, with time donated. So six minutes. Welcome. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council members. I'm another proponent requesting the annexation of the triangle. I've been resident of West Menlo Park, the unincorporated forgotten stretch of Santa Cruz Avenue for ten years. We truly feel as Menlo Park residents, this is our home, and yet we cannot vote. And there's even much more simple problems that we are facing when we're doing our evening walks. So for ten years, we've been walking the neighborhood most every night for about an hour, and anyone who has a house on Santa Cruz Avenue has to step literally onto the street to get anywhere, and there are no sidewalks. And that's why I thought of this term, the forgotten stretch, because it wasn't even included in any of the recent safety studies that have been done and have been discussed at a community meeting in August at Oaknall Elementary. And so we don't have sidewalks there. There are no finished shoulders. There's no street lighting. There are no bike lanes, and there's street parking on top of that. So everyone's kind of trying to get along and having some kind of safety there and avoiding any kind of collisions. And as you know, there are many in front of our house, there have been three cars totaled. Those were parked cars, thankfully, so no one got hurt. But people were either during the night, or one was in the morning hours of a Sunday, was totaled, and these cars, these accidents, don't even appear in any of the statistics because they are, by the sheriff, classified as not part of normal traffic. But obviously, no matter how these accidents really happened, I don't think it was all drunk driving. It just shows that space is very, very limited, and there are accidents that can happen that involve pedestrians, children, and there's a lot of, obviously, people who have to struggle to live on that street without heavy traffic of, I got a number from a sheriff I talked to that was in the 2009 timeframe, and he told me that fourteen thousand vehicles are traveling on Santa Cruz Avenue, that stretch between the Y intersection and the cemetery, which is where the city of Menlo Park starts. And so this recent safety study that has been done also revealed that fifty percent of the traffic goes on this two-lane stretch, one lane for each direction. No shoulders, no street lighting, no sidewalks, no bike lanes, whereas the other fifty percent have at least the four or five lanes in total, two to three per direction on Alameda de las Polgas, which is bad enough, obviously. But recently, one of the outcomes of this meeting that we had as the, in the community meeting in Oaknall was that as a first step to increase safety, the speed limit would be lowered from thirty-five to twenty-five miles per hour on the stretch between Santa Cruz Avenue and Sand Hill Road. So the first, onto the Y, and then continuing on Alameda de las Polgas, but omitting the right leg of the Y, so to speak, between the Y intersection and the cemetery. So that is why I call this the forgotten stretch. There were tables at that community meeting that was great. There were solutions, and people should, were supposed to look at the plans and the solutions. But the north of the Y wasn't even included, although all the neighbors that live there are anxiously waiting to be part of this, and a cohesive, comprehensive solution to increase the safety of everyone living there was part, and was the main goal of the whole meeting. So that is why it's really dear to my heart that this will be part of the work plan for 2018. And I really request that you reconsider putting this on the work plan. And I really, really thank you for your work. Delighted to be here. I've only been here a couple times at those meetings. But as I said, I've lived here for ten years, which is the longest stretch in my whole life that I've lived somewhere. So this is my home, and thank you very much for your time and for listening.
Thank you very much for coming to speak with us this evening. Lee Rogers, followed by Pamela Jones.
Hello, Mayor Otaki, and council members. I too am a resident of the West Menlo Triangle, hoping that it might move its way up on the list of all these wonderful things that you all are doing. And I'd just like to share two perspectives. One is that this meeting itself is just like something that we dream about in West Menlo, you know, to stroll down here and engage with leadership that we recognize as neighbors and people who live around us and understand where we're coming from. And you've heard a long list of these things that we hope life will be improved, saving the heritage trees, and better safe routes to school. And the thread that's pulling those all together is the fact that the decisions and the strategies and priorities are being set by people like you sitting up there, people that we recognize and trust. And that's what's holding it all together for us. So thank you for all that you do and for your service to our community. The second perspective is that it's now approaching, in this year, our fourth year, from when we first started talking about this with neighbors, and we showed up at Alex McIntyre's office and began conversations with his staff. And there were so many uncertainties we had in front of us, and I'm just reflecting, I know we're still a long way away from it, but there've been so many uncertainties that now are clear. And I'm grateful for all the work that the city has put into it, and for the neighbors who, if we raised close to eleven thousand dollars, and all the petitions that we've done. We did two, first for the city, and then Lafco had its own special formula. We had to do it again. And we realized that Lafco was very supportive, and this was exactly their mandate. You know, we were under the influence of the city of Menlo Park. So this was beautiful, and we still didn't know where the county stood on things. And now we're seeing the county really showing up. And, you know, Dawn Horsley is not just making statements in the Menlo Park almanac. He's actually saying things to people, like we heard today, that Joe Lococo is saying that they're willing to pay for improvements on Sharon Road if, this is what I heard, you know, you all can find the details from him, but if the city will oversee that work so that it is consistent with the future that everyone is looking towards, that so eventually, it's going to happen. The question is, obviously, you guys have so many priorities, but what has looked to be, you know, just a speck on the horizon, now looks like it might be low-hanging fruit in terms of what you might accomplish this year. Could there be some stirring of the pot, however minor by the city, that allows the work? Because the county's going to be doing some work, and Lafco's going to be doing some work, so that we might all enjoy the success of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Leah. Pamela Jones, followed by Janet Weissman-Gough.
Good evening again, Pamela Jones, resident of Menlo Park. There's a couple of areas that I wanted to make a comment on. The one about conducting business up until a late hour, which is very near and dear to me, because I need to get my beauty rest, especially at my age. But I wouldn't want you to go with option B. I think it would be unfortunate if you limited your best resource, and that's our residents. You know, and after listening to the people from West Menlo, I'm so glad they were able to have time donated to them so that we could hear their complete story. So limiting the time, limiting the ability to be able to pass on time to somebody else, I think would be very, very unfortunate. And also limiting the number of speakers. Sometimes twenty speakers have to speak on an item because that may be the only time anybody ever hears them. And they can come here and be heard by you, and they may not show up again for another five years, or an issue comes up that's important. So it's, I think that we want to be inclusive with all of our residents. And as a trade-off, to keep the meeting short, you might want to consider adding a third meeting each month, so that your calendar will not be so compact. And the mayor, working with the city manager and the rest of the little bit of staff that we have left, would be able to help put those things together, so it all be in a relatively simple manner. The second thing is, the, under library improvements, I'm a little concerned that the next steps for the Bell Haven Branch Library is not specifically stated. If it's not written, it often doesn't happen, just like they say, if it's not written, it didn't happen. didn't happen. And the third thing is, I really, really, really encourage you to go with the transparency calendar. Since that's a calendar that you would be doing, as Mr. Mueller, Vice Mayor Mueller was doing, that's not going to cause the staff any additional work. But particularly since we have an election year, that it would be important that everybody's able to see, you know, how the city representatives, how our council engages with the public and what items are important. It's not the details of what's discussed, but it's just the information that we're having this conversation going on with these particular council persons, and I know that all of you do. So I hope that you would consider the plan that Councilman Mueller brought to you some six, eight months ago, because it was useful when I looked at his. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pamela. Janet Weisman-Gough. And Janet, I know, I think we have copies of your letter. I wanted to make sure all of my fellow council members knew they do have a copy.
Great, does everyone have a copy?
Thank you, Mayor Otaki. Thank you, council members. Thank you, city manager and council. I appreciate speaking. I'm going to be fast because you've been at this since 6:00. What I really want to say is that the folks of the volunteers and people that are involved in Menlo Oaks Tree Advocacy, I am one of them, got a call from our neighbors on the west side about a year ago because they were having a sort of existential crisis over the loss of trees due to a minor subdivision in their area. And we have been working for the last three years because we had our own situation like that and could not believe that a 250-year oak tree could vanish overnight without any notification to the neighbors. So we've been working as sort of a grassroots organization with the county of San Mateo to see if we can improve the process and improve oversight and improve the ordinances that protect these trees and on and on and on. And I will tell you that it's a work in progress, and that's the best I can say about it. The county is a huge entity, and its responsibilities are, cover a vast amount of territory, and we're a speck to them. And so I'm here tonight just to support the folks from West Menlo and saying that there is a benefit both to them and to the city of Menlo Park for you to consider placing annexation on your to-do list for this coming year and not letting it go. And the reason for that is because if you take a look at an aerial map, as was mentioned earlier, what you'll see are not the tree-lined streets that you see as you're driving around or walking around. What you'll see looks like parts of the Amazon rainforest in that all of the interiors of these lots that have been developed over the last 15 years are clear-cut. And that makes a very detrimental environmental impact on our entire community, not just the unincorporated parts, but on our neighbors to the left, right, and all around us. You know, effective tree protection takes a lot of time and commitment and education and effort. And there's a better chance of that happening when you're working with your neighbors on that than if you're trying to work at a county level on something that's affecting you personally. And I think for all of those reasons that it would be an asset for you folks to move that up on your priority list, because what you don't want to find is that you have an asphalt jungle around you in, you know, two years from now when you do have, you know, a space in your agenda for looking at this. So you have to act now because these trees come down and they can't be put back again.
Thanks.
Thank you, Janet. All right. I don't think we have any other speakers for this item, so let's bring it back up here. I know there are a couple of questions on the actual priorities on the work plan, but what I'd like to suggest is we get through the budget principles and the procedures manual, and then we'll hopefully knock those out, and then we can focus on the work plan. So I did not see any additional changes on the budget principles. I do, as I mentioned, even in the, in our meeting, that I appreciate the addition and the rewording of that language, so I think I'm good with that. Are there any additional changes? Yes, Catherine.
I believe that was page 23.
Correct.
I just had a suggestion. Under the promote the city's long-term fiscal sustainability, we could add something to the effect of finding shared economies to provide more efficient use of funds. I think it's nice to call out that where possible, we need to look at whether it's shared maintenance for vehicles, whether it's, there are things that we've done in the past that have enabled us to take advantage of economies of scale. And we should always keep a lookout, whether it's working with other jurisdictions or where it becomes available, to find those economies of scale.
Great. Any other comments?
Just on that, I'm supportive of that. Can you just repeat the wording you had?
I wrote, and I'm happy to have edits, is find areas of shared economy to provide more efficient use of funds.
Can I just make a motion?
Shared services, yeah. Okay.
Can I just make a motion that would go ahead and accept this, the budget principles with the proposed amendment?
Okay, I'll second.
Could I ask one question?
Yes.
Just to clarify, shared economies versus shared uses. I wanted to clarify.
Shared services.
Services, okay.
If it could say which may include, then at least there's flexibility. This makes it seem as if that's what we will do.
Yeah, which may. I agree with that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Great. And I support that as well. So do we have, yes, we have a motion and a second, and I think...
Everybody's voted?
We're ready to vote? Okay.
The motion passes unanimously.
As amended. Thank you.
Okay.
And thank you, Councilmember Carlton, for the changes. Now, let's go to the procedures manual. Certainly, the key question is the open item regarding the... Well, first of all, there was the one change in language about traveling and in record. Does everyone like the revised language on, this is page 35. I feel comfortable with the revised language. Let's go to the key question of the late hour.
Sorry, total minor thing. Just take the word secretary out and put assistant in, because that's what it's called.
At page 35.
Page 35.
Page 35, okay.
Under, third paragraph down, under meeting schedule.
Third paragraph down. Sorry, I'm just catching up to you on that.
Says city manager, secretary.
Just remove the word secretary and change it with the correct title of assistant.
Oh, got it, okay.
Yeah.
Great.
And then I have questions on page 41. Conducting business at a late hour, just, I know, my one question I want to ask now, and then I'll have other questions.
Okay.
Can you explain why it says it's a three-fourths vote? Can somebody?
I think that was what was in there prior.
Okay.
Yeah, the prior language was three-fourths.
It actually says four fifths. Oh, no, sorry, that's calling the question, I apologize. Okay.
Option A had three-fourths, and that's what I recalled was the prior language.
That's four fifths to get three-fourths.
It's funny to put it that way. It should just be four fifths, but anyway, I'll have questions. I know everybody has a slide up.
Okay.
I just wanted to move, actually, so if you guys still want to discuss the language.
I actually wanted to point out, since it was brought up by a speaker, that we have many times, at the discretion of the mayor, moved to two minutes. There have been times when literally we would have had four hours of speakers. And at one point, it was, we had so many people that we actually asked if you were going to say exactly the same thing, when the person finished, you could stand up, and then we would know, just to try and respect everyone communicating, but trying to also respect the hour where we would finally make a decision. So whether it's A or B doesn't actually change our policy and what we do. It's really just kind of different wording.
Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Mueller?
Yeah, I'm just going to go ahead and move that we go with option A, that we change that to four fifths or three-fourths, depending upon quorum, or two-thirds, depending upon what the quorum is that evening. And then that we go ahead and, the other amendment on the term secretary to assistant. And then there was one more, I think you guys had pointed out. No?
Okay, so you're recommending, your motion is around option A.
Option A, and it would say two-thirds or three-fourths or four-fifths, alternatively, based on what the quorum was that evening. And then secretary changed to assistant, and that'll be a motion then to move forward with it.
I'll second it. So I just have a morbid question in this. So it says by, that vote has to be taken by 11:00. What if we're in the middle of a big debate and we miss that? It just seems odd that it has to be done by that time. Maybe we say, a vote should be taken at that time, and if, I'm just saying, it just reads odd.
The idea being that city clerks should probably alert the council it's 11:00.
That's fine, I'll take it as a friendly amendment.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? I know I previously thought it would be better to have the 11:30, just because of, you don't always have the perfect foresight until you get there. But if we could get the assistants to let us, remind us that it's 11, I'm perfectly fine. And in the interest of moving forward, I'll go ahead and support this as well.
Can I just ask one clarification?
Yes.
Do you want language that tracks option A on the agendas? Because I don't, that was part of B. It would be different language, but it would be language that would track option A?
I'd like, yeah, I'll make that part of my motion.
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
To actually put it on the agendas themselves so that members of the public who come to the meeting actually see that that's our policy. So in option B, we had some...
Warn them that this may go till midnight?
Well, that if it does go to midnight, that the council...
Well, it also reminds us, because we fell off the practice.
Yes, exactly. We didn't.
Well, actually, that's true. Then people feel like they've been warned and they don't feel like we're trying to...
Well, the other is, if they're there beyond 11 and you have not voted to extend the meeting, they know they can leave because you're not going to bring up any new business after midnight if it appears it's going to come up too late. So they don't sit here for an hour and then have you say, oh, it's midnight, we have to call the meeting.
That's fine.
I think that's a good suggestion. You're comfortable as maker of the motion?
Absolutely.
But that suggestion...
I'm comfortable as a second.
Okay. All right. And anyone want to, I assume no one wants to change their votes? Okay, great.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, so let's go to the work plan. And I know there's one clarification question from public comment I wanted to ask, which is about the Safe Routes and the, just, there was a question on whether or not there was a somewhat part of an infrastructure component, also clarifying stakeholders' meetings when they took place. I just wanted to see if you, Nikki, if you had any comments or thoughts on that?
Sure. So the Safe Routes program that is included in the work plan is really, as Chip described, meant to be educational and encouragement-based. We wanted to be clear in the description that we're not proposing to build infrastructure. That said, the maps that Ms. Wilson mentioned, looking at routes to school, that's really an encouragement tool. So we think that would be part of this effort, whether it's done in the first six months. We're still working on that schedule to make sure that we can achieve the overall convening of the group. So I can't tell you tonight exactly what that schedule looks like for producing those maps, but we would envision that the encouragement maps would be part of this effort.
Okay. Great.
I have a question on that.
If it's a follow-up, sure, go ahead.
I have a follow-up question.
Councilmember Carlton.
I think everything you've suggested is perfect and wonderful. Are we going to have a time this year as well to look into potentially maybe outlining new routes? I realize they may not be built this year, but will we be outlining routes to be built maybe next year, the year after, as it gets laid out?
The maps that we'd be looking at are really identifying, based on the existing infrastructure, what the recommended route is to walk or bike to school. Looking at some of the infrastructure changes that would be needed for the, those future routes, I think happens in two different buckets. One is the Transportation Master Plan, and really looking at what our priorities are for infrastructure projects going forward. And then the other is, through the Safe Routes program, we envision having a staff member liaison so that a parent who sees an infrastructure issue can call into that dedicated person, and they can then navigate the city channels to make sure that it gets to the right people.
Okay, so this will feed into the Transportation Master Plan, whose end result will be moving towards putting in bike lanes and different things needed in terms of infrastructure in the future.
Right, right. We envision that a criteria that we use to prioritize projects in the master plan would be their relationship to a school route.
Great, thank you.
Okay, I wanted to just divide this and talk about the top six. Just one question before, because I know we've got, we're going to have a lot of questions on some of the new items, whether they be put, but the top six. One of the things that bothered me a little bit about when we finished that meeting was that the Bell Haven Library didn't make it, and the Guild did. And, you know, I think very highly of the Guild project, I'm supportive of, you know, doing that, but I'm also supportive of the Bell Haven Library. Certainly, one thing we can say is that, even if it's not on the top six, it's still on the work plan. But I wanted to make sure that, I wanted to come back to all of you, and I think, Councilmember Carlton, I think we had talked about this.
I was concerned about it.
I share your concern, is that it looks like the Guild knocked off the Bell Haven Library, which we've talked about for years and more loudly recently.
Well, I actually did ask our city manager, who I'm getting eye contact with because he knows I'm going to ask the question. Our city manager said that although it's not in the top six, it is something that we're working on. And just because it's not in the top six, just because any of these aren't in the top six, does not mean that they're not things that we're working on, and we intend to finish this year, or at least a substantial chunk of.
Absolutely.
And so I just want to, on the record, ask you, because it was something I'm concerned about, because I am, I think all of us are passionate about really moving forward on the Bell Haven Library, so.
Right. And if I can, the Bell Haven Library is on a very discreet track. The consultant is on board for the needs assessment, and Nick Shigda, the Assistant Library Director, is actually leading the project. So it will remain on track, absent, you know, somehow I lose Nick Shigda. Other than that, I think we're standing well with the Bell Haven Library remaining on track. The next step behind the needs analysis is the citing analysis, or the space analysis. And so that will be yet again another consultant coming on, or the same consultant perhaps coming on board. And so there's a sequencing that's happening, and it's being laid out. I feel very confident that will move forward, again, absent something unforeseen happens at the library level, because it's not really affecting any other staff at this point.
Right. And someone had asked what the next step was, and I understood that there's the needs analysis, the space analysis, all this. So there is actually a laid-out process that we're following at this point.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
And let me, just finally on that, I wanted to make sure, so... And let me just on, just finally on that, I wanted to make sure, so as I look at, I, as I look at the master, the general list, on page 62, I see library improvements. But I'm, I thought when we went through on Friday, we had actually split that into two, one being the main library, one the Bell Haven Library.
So there, this is, I think Councilmember Mueller and I had this conversation earlier tonight as well. You did split it for the sake of consider, staff's understanding, is you split it for the sake of considering it for the top six priorities. When it didn't make the top six priorities, it, it sort of went back to the, the, the main work plan, the way it was living before, sort of adjacent to the library system improvements.
Through, through the mayor, I, I think the intent of council, and please, everyone correct me if I'm wrong, was to keep those separate only in as much as, they are two different projects, they're two different animals. They're both animals, but they're very different. And we wouldn't want one to, to hinder the other moving forward. Does that make sense?
It, it does. And again, this was just staff's takeaway from the meeting as we interpreted it all because the next day we sat down and went through this whole list again.
Yeah, I know, it's hard.
And so it was just our understanding. And so if the council has a different interpretation, please tell us tonight because that's what we need to understand.
So, yeah, I actually made the-
Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, I actually made the motion to decouple it. And the reason why is I wanted to give Bell Haven priority over the other. I just don't think there's political support right now to move forward with the bond for the main library. I don't know where that funding will come from. I personally am not comfortable, for instance, asking Facebook for money like that when they have such a large development project in front of the city. I don't know where else money of that amount would come from for a project for $20 million. So I, I don't think the UUT is appropriate. I don't think bonding for, I think bonding for it frankly isn't, is a, politically isn't going to work. So I'm not, I think, but the Bell Haven project is some, Bell Haven, I think, is something that is just with, they need a library. Needs to be improved.
I think, I think we already did give direction and I-
So let's reinforce that. Let's just make sure now, is there support for splitting that library improvements?
I did not agree with that.
Okay.
Because I, I, again, this, I, I view this as micromanaging. I can get into some of these projects and do this for a lot of these Burgess Pool capital improvements. Don't focus on the, this part, focus on the other part because you can order faster. What I think, the spirit of this is, I do think when you see a bond measure, a revenue plan not being supported, that's going to slow down part of that project. It's not going to have a revenue plan. We've got to continue to meet and figure out what that strategy is. Meanwhile, the other one continues moving forward. By decoupling it, it's, it's, it's putting in a directive that this one moves forward no matter what. If this one gets funding and this one has a strike point, do we bring it back up and change it or not? I just think that's, I can make this argument for multiple projects here. I can, you know, I, I just think that you start digging into these things, and I can do this on a lot of these projects. I can, I can prioritize one over another in, just on facilities maintenance master plan. Because one's easier than the other. I think we all recognize that if there's an opportunity for one of the two to move forward, that one should move forward and continue moving forward on its pace, and Bell Haven is. This is, microphone's not working well at all.
Yeah, can I, I'll speak to that too.
Okay. Councilmember Keith.
Thank you, Mayor Taki. My understanding was actually the understanding of staff and the way that it was presented and what Rich has just said. So that's what I had understood as well. And I think we are, we have, could you, would you mind putting that list back up of the 50 projects since we're talking about it?
The list of the six or the larger?
No, the, the larger list that includes the six. It's just helpful to have it up while we talk about it. Oh, except it's really hard to read.
It's hard to read. I can go to a-
It's so helpful.
I have, I have a liking list of 10.
Actually, I have to say, Chip, it's helpful here on our screens when you do that, when you put it back to that. Thank you. Because it's right here in front of me. But your understanding, Mr. McIntyre, was exactly what my understanding was too, and for the same reasons that Rich just outlined so eloquently.
So I think it's three of us understood it one way and two understood it the other.
I, I don't really mind one way or the other as long as we're very, very clear that we want Bell Haven Library to move forward. I think the rest is semantics, but I want absolute clarity that we would like the Bell Haven Library to move forward.
That's fine, please.
And not to have something hinder it unless something major happens. So Kent, you're in agreement with what? I, I, I think it doesn't matter. I think what does matter is the intent.
So let me just, if I can add to it, I'm, I'm fine if, if it's one item, but I do think that it needs to be more explicitly worded in here. It just says library improvements and the milestones are, you know, pending next steps approved by council. I would highly recommend that that be, the description include Bell Haven Library in it.
I would agree with that.
So, you know, may, maybe, I think it can talk about the system, but what I, what I would recommend is we, we need to be a little more explicit than just the, the current vague language.
Yeah, I mean, guys, so the legislative intent of what we're trying to do is make sure Bell Haven continues to go and that the other project will frankly wait until there's funding. There's nothing wrong with stating what our legislative intent is within the work plan because that's what we're saying. I don't-
It is if it eliminates the chance later to bring the other one back up.
It doesn't eliminate it.
Well, it does because you have the priorities.
No, you don't.
And you'll have to bump something.
No, but we are saying right now, we're saying it together. We want Bell Haven to go right now.
Keep going.
And then the other one will go when it gets its funding, right? That's what we're saying right now. There's nothing wrong with listing it that way. I mean, my, my confusion-
But you don't even split them. See, what you're saying is inherently split them, which is two different projects.
No, not, you can put, no, if you want to put it, you can go library improvements and then you go Bell Haven right now. And then, you know, next asterisk, main library when funding's apparent. So it's not, I guess it's not split, it's just the legislative intent of that they're decoupled and that they don't have to be going at the, at parallel. Like if one stops, the other doesn't stop too.
Yeah, the other one's just, it's a funding discussion, not a project moving forward. And so if we sat and had said, staff, just wait and see if we get funding, they won't get funding. So there has to be staff moving ahead, looking at funding alternatives.
I actually think it's a waste of money right now to have staff, and I think it's a waste of staff time to have them keep working on this.
Well, I know that, that's why I'm disagreeing with you. That's why you're gonna split it.
Yeah, because I'm, so-
Yeah, I do. I think it's a waste of staff time and money right now to keep spending staff time on something that there's no funding for.
I guess I have to say too, I don't think it's a waste of time. I disagree as well.
Yeah, I don't think there's consensus, Ray, on, on that particular aspect. I, I think the way you had started it, which was, which was, which was, you know, that the main library needs to, to be at a point where it's got funding, but that, I don't think we took that as precluding staff working on that.
If, that's fine. If you guys want staff to continue to spend time of it at the expense of other things on the work plan, when there isn't, or and I don't see that there's a viable funding mechanism for it in the, in the near future, then that's fine. You guys, I personally think, I, I mean, I want there, I, I, if there was a funding mechanism, I'd be like, yeah, staff work on it. But right now, we are so many staff members down, there are so many projects that we're being told there's not capacity for. And there's a citing meeting coming up on the library and plus how much money we're spending on the library right now, as that we could be spending on other projects.
I guess, I don't think that there's agreement on this yet. And so the way that I see this draft council work plan presented on this issue is what I understood when we were, when we met. I, I understand the point that library improvements could be planting begonias outside the door. I think it's too vague and should be more clearly worded if, if that's our, to raise point. I guess it could say library system improvements because we already have a library landscaping. I know, but you know what I'm saying. No, we really do. No, but you could put, put the word library system if that helps clarify it more instead of landscaping.
Okay, here, let me, let me suggest, because I think we could go around this one item for, for a while. What I'd like to ask staff's support is to try, I do think there's value in having a little greater definition to talk about the Bell Haven Library. I think you've heard some mixed views about the, obviously, the, the main library, but I'd like to ask your assistants to try and craft some language that, that gives us at least a little bit of specificity, that, that shows that we do have a consensus direction around the Bell Haven Library, but that we have concerns about the main library. I'll let you kind of replay this tape back and forth because I, I'm assuming this, we're gonna see this work plan a couple of times. I don't want to keep spending a lot of time tonight. I'd like to let them draft something and then come back to us on it because I know we've got three or four other items to talk to tonight, so.
And I'm fine being in the minority on the main library. That's fine. I just want to make sure that the main library doesn't hold up Bell Haven. I think we're all in agreement on that, so.
Right, yeah.
I think we are too. And I think also with the timeline and the work that we've seen, that it, there is no holdup on either one. Because we've got the Bell, and Alex, if you could confirm that?
Yeah, yeah, so I was, I was just waiting for my moment to speak.
Thank you, sorry.
So, no, no, not at all. So I, I think we can break this into two, sort of, the library system improvements, show a Bell Haven sort of timeline and what I just described earlier tonight. And then the, the main library proposal, you know, we are, and Councilmember Mueller is right, or excuse me, Vice Mayor Mueller is right, we are in the middle of a citing and uses analysis, that there's one more meeting, the council subcommittee on this has been working on this as well with Mr. Ariaga. We are, we were planning to come back to you in probably March or if not April with the results of the citing and uses analysis. And that's sort of at that point, it's probably the right time to ask yourselves, okay, what next? Now, what next might be stop, or the what next might be great, we have a site, now let's go out and do more work on it, if that's the will of the council.
So I have a-
Councilmember Carlton.
I have a clarifying question. I just want to make sure I understood. We, we had a presentation where someone had gone out and done research. And you all know, you've heard me say before, I'm always skeptical of research in terms of, of variance, in terms of, of making sure that it's actually a, a good representative sample of, of what people think. And I was under the impression that, that research had indicated that there was not enough support in the community to support a bond. Did I misunderstand that?
So if I can, the, the, the survey results, and actually, Councilmember Carlton, you were absent at the meeting, which is why you missed this, my, my sort of presentation on this. The survey results were meant to take a temperature. They were not meant to be definitive. They were never intended to be definitive. And, and certain people can choose to determine it to be definitive, that's fine, but that was never our, that was never our intent in going out. We happened to be undertaking a community-wide survey. We stalled it for a month or two so that we could include questions about a library and about the parking lot. Both questions were inserted into the survey just to find out what did the community think. And I think what, what, the survey results, while they weren't, you know, they weren't results that told us to surge forward and, you know, do a bond issue, I think the, the council subcommittee interpreted the survey responses meaning, we need to get more information out there to help people understand what we're talking about. Because there was just a lot of lack of, of information. I know anecdotally, I told a reporter earlier today, you know, when I go to a block party on my, in my neighborhood and they know who I am, and I ask them about a library and they always just say to me, what library? What are you talking about? They don't, I mean, so there's just this lack of information right now. And again, if the council chooses to stop the library project, that is your prerogative to do so, I wouldn't take the survey results as being that reason to do so. I mean, we have more work to do if we are going to do a bond or any kind of financing measure.
So the work that we're doing is only in as much as we, we figure out what our options are, consider those, and then decide whether to move forward-
Right.
-with a potential bond measure or funding or what have you. So that we make an informed decision.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, to go on, I'll entertain suggestions for next topics. Is there-
Yeah, I actually have some.
Vice Mayor Mueller.
All right. So first, I want to thank Alex and staff. You guys are extremely short, short-staffed right now and you guys are working, you're bending over backwards to try to meet our priorities, which I really appreciate. I think we all, as a council, appreciate it. We're really grateful for that. I did want to comment on the housing comment, and that's that, I want, it's, we always hear from our housing advocates, they're very passionate. I did want to point out that in 2016, we were in the top five in the state for adding housing as a city. And that never seems to come up in the discussion, but it's really a remarkable achievement on that topic. And some people in town frankly probably aren't very happy about it. I think that it's important to note for housing advocates that there is be an opportunity to have a discussion about how we approach affordable housing when we do the Town Town specific plan review, which is a top six priority. And I, I personally am looking forward to having that discussion then. I think it's good to note that we're still doing work on the library even though it's no longer in the top six because that does demonstrate that there is capacity outside the top six. And so there are two items, frankly, there's one item that's not even in the top, not even on the work plan that I wanted to talk to you all tonight. I did some research on it and our good friend Jim Lewis provided me with information, and that's the Menlo Gates project. They've raised $40,000 of the $80,000 necessary from private funders. And I'd put it to you guys, I think the city should just step up and make a matching $40,000 donation and finish that project. That's going to be a city landmark. There's no reason why we wouldn't pay for half of that. So I'd like to actually just put that into the work plan and be done with it and have that project move forward. The second thing I'd like to do, had put into the work plan, and it can go in the place of the gatehouse fence replacement or something like that, would be, I do think, I do remember meeting over four years now with the West Menlo Triangle annexation. You guys have been waiting a very long time. I think it's time that we teed that up. And I think last time we said we didn't have time for it in the work plan. I think it's time to add it to the work plan and take a vote on that. So I'd like to see that put in. And, and then it wasn't memorialized in the staff report, but it was said to us at the meeting, and maybe I just missed it, that if we get the signatures for Sharon, on Sharon Road for those sidewalks, that come mid-year, that's something that could be added into the CIP, CIP, and we can move forward with that project. So because that was stated in the meeting, but there's no record of that, I wanted to make sure that that was recorded tonight in the record this evening because we are planning to go out and talk to all of those, I think, 17 neighbors to get those signatures for the sidewalks there. So that is, those are my comments. But I really do, I really do think it's time to just, they're having trouble with the Menlo Gates getting that last $40,000. They were able to raise half of it. I think it's time we just move forward with that.
Okay, so there's, there's two, there's two recommendations in that comment, and so let's take them one at a time. So I didn't even bring up the gates when we went through this because I thought it was a, a almost normal course of business, small, you know, application. Alex, did, does that even need to be on this or is it?
So the, the, where the Menlo gates are right now is, is the council's proved the concept of the gates. You also talked about them being, in fact, we were talking with the Historic Society about their, their mobility. In other words, we could sort of plant them in the-
That they could be moved later.
They could be moved, thank you.
We haven't figured out where they'd go yet.
And one of the reasons, no, one of the reasons I think we stalled was because the library project suddenly asked this question, where will the library end up on the, called the north end of the Burgess campus here? And so that sort of, that stalled the project because, because, and now, because the library is down to two location choices, the gates could be reinst, could be picked up again as a project to go basically at the pathway between the current library and the gatehouse. There's a, there's a-
Yes.
-place that the council had suggested that we, we put them.
That's-
I know at the end of the day, it still became a funding issue on who was going to pay for what. And I know there was pieces we were going to pick up as the city with regard to some of the utility infrastructure. But one of the encouragement, one of the suggestions I'd made to the Historic Society folks was that, you know, they needed to raise the monies to pay for, for the balance of it, so.
To be honest, that, that gate is historic and it's embarrassing. It looks terrible.
Different gates.
I really don't think we should take that off the list.
Different gates.
No, no, I'm talking about the, I'm talking about-
The other gates.
That was just a suggestion, something. That was just something, that was a suggestion, you can leave it on, but I would like, I mean, it was just a suggestion of one thing on the list. I'm not, we don't need to take that off. I just want to give $40,000 to the Menlo Gates Project, meet, meet the half. They've raised half, we can give them half, and then meet the utility requirements and put in the landmark.
So to be really clear, Vice Mayor Mueller, you are referring to the Historic Society's gate monument, not the gates that are adjacent to the.
No, the gate monument.
Right, no, I'm agreeing. I just want to be clear that we're on the same topic here.
Yeah, he also was talking about not taking the, the gatehouse fence off the list, but.
No, I wasn't. I was just saying that was one thing we could look at.
So with regard to the, the annexation, I've also met with the neighbors. And when, when this, I think, first started, and someone from LAFCO was there, and I say neighbors because we are neighbors. My kids went to school with, with some of the people there, which is why I knew some of the people in the, in the triangle. They're already part of our community. As I said, we, we go to the same schools, we bike the same streets, we know each other. I, I think that I 100% support moving forward as best we can. I don't know the, the process. I don't know if we're waiting for LAFCO to make a decision before the city. Can you explain to me more the process as this moves forward? Where we are now, or Chip, or whoever, explain to us now what the process is between where we are now and, and when they're annexed? Because I, I do think that's important. And it, and it does impact whether it's the trees, whether it's the kids getting into gymnastics classes, you know, it's an inclusion issue as well.
Yeah, I don't have all the details right in front of me. I'll ask Linda to come up maybe in a minute to answer some questions. But we have several components that we need to do. From the city's side of it, we've started to understand what infrastructure that the city would be taking on if we were to annex that. So we've been working with the county to determine that, and we've got those cost components. So one big piece of this is negotiating with the county on what are we going to receive to, let's say, bring those, the infrastructure components up to city standards or closer to city standards? And then we also have the property tax issue of negotiating how much of the, the county's share of the property tax that the city might see for any services that we would incur there. So those negotiations do take an, an amount of time that we've seen and experienced. And so that's really some of that capacity constraint is there. And then there's a lot of the technical components of actually doing the right mapping, doing the pre-zoning of the properties, going through the LAFCO process, going through the county process, and going through the city process approval. So all of that just takes time, is really what it comes down to. And then there's just the money issue that we would have to decide on how far do we want to push that money issue at the end of the day? And the constraint really is just the staff time and capacity to work on the topic.
So Chip, does that, just if I may ask, the follow-up on, on this, is that, do I sense that a lot of this would be public works? Because, I mean, I, I know one of the, one of the constraints that in the past, when it came up, not, not just recently, but like a year ago, was the cost of improving Sharon Road. And, and as I heard tonight, there, there seems to be at least some support for, from the county about at least contributing in some way toward that to some level of standard that's not yet, you know, been negotiated or discussed. But, but I certainly sensed a lot of this is around public works. Is, is that correct? And if that is correct, then, you know, I know one of the rules we've been talking about is if we're going to put it on, we got to take something off. So does that mean we take, we got to look at the public works section and see where? I, I just want a little bit of direction on, on, you know, this capacity balance that, because I support, I support wanting to move it on to the work plan. But I'm also respectful of what do we take off the work plan, and I want to know where I should be looking for that.
It really touches on multiple areas. Public works is one, one of the bigger pieces, and some of their work has already been completed, but there's definitely work that needs to be done there. There's work on the planning side with all of the pre-zoning components that would need to occur. So some of, let's say, the biannual review, the Guild Theater, those sorts of things could be impacted by this, as well as the finance department. Because there's a lot of work that needs to be done on the property tax side of this, and doing some of the negotiations related to finance. And then ultimately, the city manager's office that might oversee and manage some of the project there. So there's a combination of areas that touch upon each one of those. So I would have to look at the list again to see what would be maybe appropriate to think about if you were to swap something.
Okay, hold on, Ray. I know, Rich, you've had patiently had your light on. Is that related to this topic?
It is. I, I've, I'm, the two things in my head are, this is a June-to-June plan. And so, you know, there are projects ongoing now that will be completed hopefully by June. Some will come off, but they're probably not on this list. And then is there a way to project what a June-to-June would look like? Is, is there one part of this that is, you know, discussions with the county, right? And so it's this part, not these other pieces, because this is the part we'll be doing for the year. I, I'm just trying to figure out how you put it down in realistic projections.
Sure, so it is a June-to-June plan because, or just July-to-July plan, July-to-June plan, because the council will fund it in June, and then July we'll have the funds available to, to move forward. But, but this has been a project that's been going, going for several years, and we've been sort of working almost at arms-length at this time, at this point with it. Because I think you, you heard the neighbors talk about how much they've learned and discovered, and, and going from, how do we do this, to suddenly becoming much more expert at how to do this, and, and that's, that's fantastic. I think that the, the heavy lift really is, you know, in public works, probably primarily, and, and going back to this concept of, of expectations. If we move forward, my, my, my point person on this project is Chip Taylor. And for those of you who don't know, Chip Taylor is leaving our organization. And so the, the trade-off now is, I, I got no one leading this effort. I've got no, no spearhead here. Doesn't mean we can't keep moving forward, it's just going to get a little more, less coordinated until I find somebody to coordinate it. You probably saw me get up and go whisper in Linda's ear. We do have a contract planner who works for us, who is working on the planning side of this, although that planner's hours have been cut because he, not cut, have been limited because he's gone and found other work with other organizations. The public works side, I think the biggest concern there is really understanding the condition of the existing infrastructure, what it is going to take to upgrade it, and then is there enough money from the county to pay for those upgrades? And I think if I heard the statement properly from one of the neighbors, and I apologize which one of you said this, is as long as the city leads the project. And that's the part that just makes me lean back in the chair going, oh, boy, now I'm rebuilding a street. Takes a lot of effort to do that. Doesn't mean we would have to do that project right away, though. And if the expectation is, hey, neighbors, come on into the city, now you're in, we may not build the street for several years, though. If that, as long as that is an understanding moving forward, so.
And that's the follow-up I had, it's just the last point to, through the mayor, just, I, I'm, I'm not supportive of having a, a big monetary shift where something comes off of this list for, for something like this. I'm, I'm supportive of moving it along, but it's got to fall in line with the other process work plan. And I, and we didn't have enough time to vet all the details. We still don't have the details. So I'm, I'm, I'm saying, I don't mind it being on here, but I need to be projecting to something that's much more manageable than what I heard from Chip.
Councilmember Keith, because I know you haven't spoken on this topic.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I actually, I, I appreciate your efforts in trying to do this, and I understand it, it would be wonderful to be in the city of Menlo Park, I get that. And I, I did talk to Supervisor Horsley today about it. I know he's supportive, but the thing that we also talked about was the finances. When you spoke, you know, you spoke of the lights, no lights, no sidewalks, no bike lanes, all these things that fall upon the city to do. And so the question I had for Supervisor Horsley was, well, if, you know, if we took this on, then how much money is the county going to be, to provide for these things that the county has not done in this area? And I also spoke to Joe LaCoco today, and what they, it's, it's absolutely true what our city manager is saying, that they'll fund some things, some, only up to the county standard, which is different from our city standard. So what they are willing to fund doesn't cover what the city standard is. And they're not willing to fund the things that you're asking for, the sidewalks, the lights, the, the other things. The thing that he said that the only thing was funding construction costs for reconstruction of Sharon Road from Alameda de Las Polgas to Cloud Avenue to the county's road, to the county's road standards. And that the city would have to take on, the county's not going to do any of it, the city would have to take on all the management of this. So those are my concerns about when I look at this. I, I know it seems like, wow, it's such an easy thing, we just want to annex in, what's the big deal? But when we look at these things after being here for years, there are a lot of different pieces. And I, I understand, Chip, what you just said, the different, the finance, the property tax issue, the planning, and then of course, the giant, there is a public works project to build these, the infrastructure, to bring it up to city standards. So I, I am also supportive of having this be somewhere, but I don't know, I, I, I don't know that I want to drop things off the work plan when I don't have all the information really from the county either. And I don't understand if they're willing to negotiate more funding to annex this in because of the high costs. And I've never seen, I'd like to know, what are the costs? I, I don't know what this looks like for the city. And it would be important for me to know how much it is. And just since we've done the sidewalks on Santa Cruz Avenue, I've seen what a big project it is. And that alone took, you know, I want to say over 10 years to do, decades, I guess you could say. So those are my concerns about this, and I, and our work plan as we have it set up right now.
So Vice Mayor Mueller.
Yes, I talked with Don too today, and I've been following this with LAFCO since the whole time. And basically what happens is, so the position that they've started with right now, it's a negotiation. So what we heard from them today was their first position in the negotiation. What we, what they're looking for us from right now is intent to say, yes, we'll move forward. At that point, we start the negotiation. I think what the folks in the triangle want, and what the county is looking for, is for us to say, yes, and start. Now, the negotiation may go bad, it may not work out, we may not get to where we need to get. But at the very, at the, just to start having the discussion, this council needs to say, yes, our intent is yes, let's start the negotiation. Now, I'm, I think we can do that, and I'm, I'm going to challenge you just a little bit, Chip, because you said this could take from top-six priority projects like the Guild, because it's in planning. No, it can't, because the Guild is one of the top six. It can't take away from those things. If it, push comes to shove, those top-six things win. But if there is time, when there's no, no work being done, that this is a project that once we say, yes, we have the intent, it's in the queue. And I think, but, and I'm, you know, I think when speaking with folks in the triangle, I think what they're looking for right now is, they're patient, they waited four years. The process may take some time. What they want to hear from the city is, yes, we want you, let's start. And I think, I think, and I, I think we can do that.
So let me just chime in here, in the, in the interest of, of wanting to keep capacity here. So I look at the, under the municipal infrastructure and facilities, which I consider the public works section, there's the Ariaga Family Rec Center HVAC system upgrade. While that's, I know that's important, it's also a building that's maybe four years old, five years old, maybe, oh, longer, okay. So it is, it's longer, maybe nine years. But I don't know if there's any capacity, you, you asked for, you know, a suggestion of something that might allow, see, what I, what I look about the, the annexation is, we've got, we've got some, some neighbors who are very interested and have been waiting patiently, you know, three years. And I think we deserve to take it to the next step of investigation, to answer the questions that we're all having tonight, which sounds more like public works questions, you know? How much is Sharon Road going to cost to bring up to the city level? How much is the county willing to pay? What are sort of the, the minimum levels and, and get to that negotiation stage? Recognizing we haven't made a final decision, we don't know the capacity to actually, to do that. But just get to that next stage, I think we deserved, or, or the, those, the folks who have been working, you know, three years on it, I think they deserve an answer, will we take it on or not? And I think there's interest, so how do we?
So I have a, I have a suggestion, and, and it actually came from Justin, because we have technology that can, we can communicate now without. What, uh, given that this, this would still be probably a multi-year process, and given that some of the, the physical infrastructure improvements could be put into a, you know, five-year CIP. In other words, we do a five-year CIP for any project typically. And so that, you know, it could be set out in the outer years to say, we will, let's just say, we improve Sharon Road because that's what maybe needs to be done. And maybe it's a 10-year project, maybe it's not in the first five years. And we get the money for it, we bank it, and, and we're able then, hopefully, they'll, it'll still be sufficient to be able to pay for it, depending on inflation and things like that. But one of the, the biggest thing really is the nego, is understanding the details and the negotiations. And my suggestion would be, because these negotiations, whether it's between Mr. Maltby and myself, which is fine, but sometimes the interesting negotiations could be between Mr. Horsley and the council. So my suggestion would be this form a council subcommittee on this. And then that helps, sorry to do this, I don't mean to be rude, but it's like, that helps provide a little alleviation of, of capacity on my side. And then we, we can go to the county together, we can work with the neighborhood together. And I think if we get two real experts on annexation, this is something we don't know, excuse me, this is something we don't do, as you know, and so we don't have a lot of expertise on it. But getting two council members who can build that expertise with staff, with the, excuse me, with the neighborhood, it could be a solution.
I'd be happy to be on a subcommittee and look into it.
Yeah, you probably can't appoint yourselves tonight, but we'll come back and do that.
I'd be happy to serve too.
Okay, and, and as much as I'd like to be, I actually am a little worried about, I may be recu, well, actually, the triangle I'm not recused on, but if any more of that section, I'm a little.
And Vice Mayor Mueller, are you recused or not?
I'm not. We looked at it last time this came up, and I was just.
Okay, you're, you're, okay. So, and, and actually, given that there are two.
I'm easily far enough away, I'm fine.
Two volunteers.
We will come back and do the appointment, because it's not agenda-ed tonight, but that could be a, that could be a partial solution to work with the county, work with the neighborhood. And we will then get the, the hard data on what, it, it won't be perfect data, but it'll be to order of magnitude that the road's going to cost X.
Okay. A couple of other things. First of all, I know a lot of people spoke at that Friday meeting about, or was it Friday or Monday? Now, time is, housing and environmental. I did want to also mention that those, those are topics that are part of our DNA now. And so they are across a, a lot of the projects. I, I certainly wanted to make sure that, that folks who, who spoke to us and took the time and spoke to us know that, yes, those were very important items, Councilmember.
It's a question on the, we didn't prioritize or, or order the six. And I, I think the direction always is, staff will figure out the most effective way to order them. Get the specific plan going first, so we can put housing in there, or anything we want to discuss within these, so that you're not doing it twice.
Right.
It's, it's a prerogative of the staff, but I think that's, that would, that's what I think we talked about also on that.
I think four of the six have relationships to each other. The Transportation Master Plan and Safe Routes has a, there's a linkage there, one's almost a subcomponent of the other. And same with, say, the Guild Theater and the Downtown Specific Plan, one's sort of a subset of the other. So we're going to, we're going to sequence these in a way that makes sense.
Okay, I wanted to, oh, Councilmember Carlton.
Oh, I have clarification on a point. Just had a button fall off, off my microphone. There we go, poor thing. On page, what is it, 32, 36, 48, three different places in here, it mentions basically how things, the, the process, the procedure for things going on the agenda, and for city council agendas.
Are you talking about the procedures manual?
We already did the procedures manual, it's done.
Oh, that's done. Oh, well, then, good. I'll get clarification from you later.
Okay, great. I have one other question that I have on the, on the plan, one of the plan items that relates to the, the JPA, which we, we had put into the plan. And this is for the, to address education inequality. I wanted to see if we could broaden that up, out, broaden that topic to include not only the JPA, but potential other suggestions or ideas around this same topic. Because I think the, as you know, I think JPA is an excellent suggestion, but I get the feeling there will be other, you know, and there's obviously a community dialogue that started when, when Mayor Keith had the workshop. I'd just like to broaden it.
It's fine with me, as long as I can continue to work on the JPA. Like, that's fine. Like I, but I, there are private stakeholders now who have reached out to me and the community who are very interested in it as well, so there may be other funding sources.
Right, Councilmember Keith.
Thanks, I, I think that's great to keep working on. I think it is important to broaden it. From what I've heard from community members in Bellhaven, I haven't heard anybody tell me they want to see a JPA. What I have heard from community members in Bellhaven is that they would like to be in, out of the Ravenswood School District. And so I would think that when we look at this after, whenever it is that we get to it, that we would reach out to the Bellhaven residents and figure out, what, what is it that our Bellhaven residents want to see happen? And how. And how can we best help them?
And I think this is part of that whole dialogue. And so that's why I thought it, and I think, Alex, we talked about it, you know, making this part of the initiative about addressing education inequality. But, and, and as you know, I have a different opinion. I'm supportive of the JPA. But I also think that that's part of many other things that we need to involve the community around in.
Yeah, and I would say, I mean, I think that, I don't really know anything legally about the JPA. It does, I don't know how it functions. I don't know, I, I just don't, I've never heard any details about it. So I think for, for me, I mean, maybe it's a great option. But I just want to make sure that when we start having the discussion about the Ravenswood School District and our Bell Haven residents, that we make it a broader discussion about what, what are the best op? Maybe we have a study session on it. What are the best options that we can do for our residents? Do we need to put it on the ballot to say, do these, do the Bell Haven residents want to try to get into the Menlo Park School District? I mean, I don't know. But I'm just saying, I'd like to make sure that we are trying to make this as inclusive as we can of our, for our residents so that we can hear from them to know what it is that they want to see happen.
Vice Mayor Mueller.
Yeah, I just wanted to refresh the memory. At the, actually, at the meeting in Bell Haven that the mayor Keith had, there was considerable support for the JPA expressed at that meeting, including from Sematyo County Board of Education member Joe Ross and many residents who attended. It was actually after that meeting that the Ravenswood School Board came forward and said that hearing the community input and from the supervisor, and from the board member, that they were actually open to coming back to the table. So I think there are, there's obviously differing views in the community. But I think it's worth trying to do something here. And it's a plan. And, you know, there really hasn't been an alternative plan brought forth. So I think I just want to go ahead and, if anyone wants to try to do something else, great. But at this point, I'd, I'd like to go ahead and continue to work with Ork and, or Carrington and the, and the school board, try to bring something forward.
Councilmember Carlton.
I, I have a question for Mr. McIntyre, possibly our good attorney. Déjà vu. We've had this conversation, I, at least once, twice through the years, where we all agree that we should have one school system. And then we get smacked down saying, actually, that's not your area that, it's not your turf. And so I just want clarification because I, I just feel like we've had this conversation a couple of times.
I mean, ultimately, it's the two school boards and Lafco and the State Board of Education are the ones who govern it, not the city. The city of Menlo Park can't force it, can't cause it to happen.
So when we're talking about lack of staff, what could our staff do? Or could they do anything?
So are we talking about the JPA or about?
No, no, no. We're talking about the.
Changing the district.
Changing the districts for the schools. Because we've, we've all agreed this a couple of times. And we've gone down this road a couple of times. And then we've hit this, this isn't your playground kind of wall.
I mean, there, I'm not sure that there's a lot that our staff can do other than potentially convene conversations, you know, convene meetings, try to get the parties talking, providing assistance to the residents who might want to start a process to petition the school districts to de-annex from Ravenswood and become annexed to the Menlo Park City School District. You know, there are things like that that could be done.
Yeah.
Councilmember Keith.
Thanks. Yeah, I think we, we haven't really been down this road in that when I held that meeting last year, I did hear from a lot of residents. I, some, a very few of you in here were there. But there, it was a packed house. And I did hear from, I think it was Joe Ross, some interest in the JPA. I didn't hear people coming up at the microphone to speak about it.
I did.
Yeah. And maybe they did. And you know what? If it's, if it's something people really want, then fabulous. I do understand, there was an article recently about Ravenswood being an insolvency. And so I could understand that if somebody was told, we can provide you with money, that of course they would want to have that discussion about that. That makes sense to me. But I think it's important to talk to the, our residents in Bell Haven to, you know, there was one conversation that we had at a public meeting in, in, at the senior center in Bell Haven. And I heard a lot of people say that they really did not want to be in the Ravenswood School District. So the thing that they, that they can do is get together a petition and put it on, to put it on the ballot. And so as our city attorney just mentioned, we could help with the convening of that if that's something that the residents said, this is what we want to do. But they would have to gather signatures and from people, you know, in the Ravenswood District in Bell Haven, if that's, if that was something that they wanted to do.
That's what, that's what the residents do. That's not what staff does.
Right. No, the staff could help convene this. That's all I'm saying. The residents would have to do it.
I think it's really unfortunate when we comment on other jurisdictions in this manner. Right now, the Ravenswood School District is not, is an insolvency. What's happened is that they've seen an enrollment decline that they didn't anticipate and such that they have to go ahead now and just, and adjust what they're going to be spending because their per capita, per student capita, per student has declined. That has, that's, we should not be commenting in the way we do on other school, on that school district. It's inappropriate.
Well, I'm just referring to an article that was written.
Can I just say that actually, these are all good solutions or potential alternatives. And we're not going to solve them tonight because it's something that we've all, when each of us have been mayor, we all have had this come up and we've all tried to move it along in, in different, in different ways. But, but to bring it back, I simply wanted to make sure that the item that's on the work plan includes not only the JPA, but also, you know, the, the city to help encourage that dialogue toward, towards solutions. And I just want to make sure that's, that's a consensus and support that, that we, we can broaden that language and, and for that item.
I don't know, I guess I could just, I don't know if we're broadening any, broadening it too.
Yeah. So I would say the, so that the language is, is very good and specific about the JPA. I would just simply say, JPA and, and other initiatives that help to address education inequality in Menlo Park. And just leave it, leave it at that. And that, those initiatives will include everything from, from convening, potentially, you know, the community, the neighborhood, and trying to work through different alternatives and try. It's certainly something that I'd like to see by the, you know, certainly over the course of this year, moving that dialogue forward and, and trying to see if we can reach some community consensus.
Yeah. And I just want to be really clear. I was just looking at an article that was published in the Palo Alto, online daily. And it talks about that, that the district is facing fiscal insolvency. That's all.
Okay. So can I just, let's see. The, one last item that I wanted to suggest is about quiet zones. And the reason why I wanted to mention that was simply because, while it didn't come up tonight, it did come up at the, at the meeting. And as to whether that could be part of the rail subcommittee, just as part of normal course of, you know, sort of course of project, as to see whether or not that, that, because I know there's a rail subcommittee item on here. And I think that's probably a pretty good forum for that, for that discussion to take place, if, if that's okay.
If I can clarify, so is that, does it mean, it means, sorry. Does it mean it becomes a project? Or is it just a conversation for the rail subcommittee to keep alive?
I think, I think it should go to the rail subcommittee and, and have a discussion about it. And if the rail subcommittee recommends that it become a project, that, and that may be part of our mid-year, you know, when we, when we do an assessment. But I'd like to hear the rail subcommittee to deliberate on it and, and move forward.
So I think, I think we can agendize with the, we can agendize it with the rail subcommittee if the rail subcommittee would like to have that agendized.
Can I just make a adjustment on that? I, I understand what you're saying about the quiet zones. And I know I've talked to Marcia Abramovitz and, you know, met with her. And I understand what they want. I don't, I don't know that having a rail subcommittee meet on it is super productive in that I think we kind of understand the cost. And we know they want it. And I, I think it might be a good idea to have it come back when we talk about our grade separations. Like, roll it into that. Because I don't know that the subcommittee is going to get much more than we've already, we already, than we already know. I know they have 250 signatures. I know Felton Gables wants it. I know it's about a million bucks. So maybe bringing it back with the grade crossing, you know, would be an appropriate venue for all of us to take it up.
It's kind of dictated by what we, our outcome of what grade separation alignment.
That would be true.
We decide upon. So it, even though there is a process, you can begin until we have that consensus on what that is, whether we ever get consensus on that. I don't, you know, I think subcommittee can, can provide research and input and things, but not until we know what our alignment, preferred alignment is going to be.
Right. And I believe that Ravenswood grade separation is coming back to you in spring, if my memory serves me right.
Yeah, that's right. And I was just talking with Nikki. And I think that she indicated she could wrap in some information about quiet zones into that presentation so that then the council can have some conversation on maybe what would be the next steps if they do want to put it in the work plan later.
Okay. That would be great. I just want to make sure it was at least, we'll have a chance to discuss it this year. So, okay, great. Any other comments on the work plan?
Just a couple in general. And I, I know, well, she's left. But anyway, I wanted to say, I do support housing, as much housing as we can do. And I appreciate, thank you, Vice Mayor Mueller, for bringing up the fact that we produced so much housing in 2016. And you can see it, and it's really great. And we have more projects coming forward. And I, I would like to ask, I, I don't see on the work plan, maybe it was there, but any of the mid-pen projects, for example? Are, are those in the pipeline?
I'll go ahead. You know, to remind the council, in my office, there's, there's three distinct sub-offices. There's the Office of City Clerk, Office of Sustainability, and Office of Housing and Economic Development, excuse me. So it's really a part of our baseline work. I mean, basically, as, as we deal with, say, a mid-pen project or whatever developer may come forward, we will just, we will process through because that's what you've created the capacity for us to do.
Okay. And, and I think, of course, we've all said this. We all support affordable housing, you know, west of 101 and would look forward to projects or opportunities for that if anybody wants to bring them forward. And I, I would support looking at housing on, when we look at our garage situation and talk about that, that, you know, looking at housing would be really appropriate at that time, too. So I'll look forward to when we look at the downtown specific plan. I, you know, I know the art, I'm going to just say, the arts commission, I'll give it less than 30 seconds. I'm sorry I didn't rise up. I still really would like to see an arts commission for Menlo Park. And, you know, I'm probably going to try to work with some people in the community on getting some, some murals going somewhere, you know, absent this because I think it's really important. And I, I hope that maybe next year, you know, it might rise to the, to a commission again. It just seems like a shame to have a community like ours in Silicon Valley that does not have an arts commission.
Thank you, Kirsten. Vice Mayor Mueller.
Yeah, two things on the art commission. I was, I said, if we could find something back then, I'd support it to take off. But the idea I floated to folks in the community on this issue is much, because it requires a full-time staff member, and we're having trouble recruiting staff members as it is. The idea would be to form an organization in the community similar to Menlo Spark or something like, basically, an NGO that would go ahead and promote these items. They can invite council members to be a part of that and work with them. And then eventually, when there's funding available for, or, or staff member available, that could potentially be folded into the city. I think that that is something that's really viable at this point in the alternative. And I certainly would want to be a part of that. And I think I'm looking out and I see people out there who I think would want to be a part of that, too. I know I sprung on you guys tonight, the $40,000 for the, for the gates. And I know what I, what I'd suggest, if you guys aren't, if we're not going there tonight, is to bring that back at another, at another meeting and have that discussion then about, about that issue.
I think it has to be agendized to.
Yeah. And I would support that, too. And I think when I look, I just got, you know, went to Galway. And their civic organization, you know, contributed $500 also, which was really great. But I, I think it is appropriate for the city to help. I think, you know, I, I don't know exactly where the siding is going to be, but I think it's appropriate to help so that they know that, you know, the city's invested in it.
Great.
That sounds great.
So we can bring that forward to another meeting and finalize that.
Okay. We approved. We, we voted on budget principles. We voted on the procedures manual. Do we need to approve or, or this formally? Or did you?
So my suggestion would be, let's approve this. And because I think the modify, the amendments you've made, I think, as, as long as we recapture them one more time, you're all clear on what you voted on. So we don't have to bring this back.
Okay, got it.
This too takes up capacity.
So we'll make a, so I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the work plan as we amended tonight. But I assume that it will come back as a, like a consent item just so that we could read the final language at some point or?
We could put it as an info into next week or the following meeting. That, that's not a problem.
Because we have a little, we were, particularly about the one where we were, the library, we were trying to decide on the language. I just would like to make sure that everyone's fine with that.
So moved.
Okay, great.
A second.
Let me get my screen over.
We're waiting for one more vote. The motion passes unanimously.
Okay.
May I ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
I realize that we voted on the procedures, but I just wanted to make a clarifying question to make sure I understood one part of it. I thought the way that things had worked before was that the mayor could, had the privilege of putting things on the agenda. And the, if two members of council wanted, they could get together, put something on the agenda. And I, as I understand it from Mr. McIntyre, that is not the case. To put something on an, an agenda, it has to, each item added has to be approved by city council unless it's on the work plan. Is that correct?
So, and, and.
That's actually what it says. That's what he said. That's why I want to clarify it.
If, if, can you find me the page again? I'm sorry. You, you did announce it earlier tonight and I've, I've lost it again.
Sure. It's.
I think it's page 36.
36?
32, 36, and 48. Predominantly 36.
So, and I'm, and I'm really going to apologize here.
So 30, 32 talks about the scope. That they, when it talks about the mayor, it says that.
Mayor's role.
The mayor's role. That they cannot introduce new items not otherwise part of the city council's identified priorities or staff work plan.
Right.
That's on page 32.
Towards the top.
And then page 36 talked about agenda development.[1711.50] And as I said, I was under the impression that two city council members could put something on, and, and this does not say that, this says it has to come to a vote and the majority of council. And I just wanted clarification on which one is correct.
I'm, I mean, I'm just reading the language on page 32. I just looked at the language on page 36.
Do you want, do you want to look at it and then let, and then bring it back?
Yeah, I think the two was Andy Cohen and I put that on in 2007.
I remember reviewing that in prior policy documents, so I think we should.
But it's not in here. That's why I brought it up.
Which language is not in here?
That two people couldn't bring it, that two people.
So we, two council members.
We specifically eliminated that language because of Brown Act considerations, because if you go to talk to one person and, and you don't get an affirmative, then you go to talk to another person, you automatically have a Brown Act violation. And so we, we discourage that, and the way to bring it up to avoid any Brown Act violation is to request it of the council. The council votes whether to add it to a future agenda and to develop a staff report. The mayor and the city manager always have the ability to basically put things on an agenda. So the, the agenda is determined by the mayor and the city manager. So if a council member requests it of the city manager, mayor, you know, and they agree to put it on, it can just be put on. But if it's not kind of, and that's typically, if it's outside the work plan, if it's something out of the ordinary, then they're probably not going to put it on the agenda. Then the council member can request it, council can vote to put it on a future agenda, and then the staff would prepare a staff report. I mean, that's the way the procedure manual is basically set up right now.
No, because the procedure management and mayor says it does not allow for unilateral, unlimited delay of items to be considered by the city council, or the introduction of new items not otherwise part of the city council's identified priorities or staff's work plan.
Right, that's why I'm saying, if it's something that is out of the ordinary, that it's not part of the work plan.
Then it has to be voted on.
Then it has to be voted on by the city council to bring it forward.
So that is a change from.
It's not a change, it's been the same way in the last three, four, five times you voted on it. Page 36 was not changed.
Okay.
It's, it's the same language that's been there in multiple iterations. Again, the two-member bringing things forward, we took out a long time ago because of Brown Act considerations.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, because I couldn't find it, and I wanted to make sure I understood what was here.
But I interpreted, just as a follow-up, I interpreted this language on 36, meaning that where, if another council, if a council member wanted to bring an item on the agenda, you do it, we, we could do it during council member reports.
Correct.
That's, that's what I understand.
So that's what I had interpreted here, this section on 36, to be the council, when we have, you know, discussed it during council member reports. And it's been more by acclamation if, you know, whether or not we put it on the agenda. And then there's latitude for the mayor's to, working with the city manager as to which future meeting it's going to get on, but yeah, we can't unreasonably.
But they can't delay it.
Unreasonably delay. It's got to be, you know, when, when we're ready, so. Vice Mayor Mueller.
Are we going to move on to a new subject?
Yep.
It's 11, it's 5 to 11, so I'd like to make a decision.
No, that's fine. I just want a clarification on that, because I, it was different than I thought our procedure was.
Okay, so Vice Mayor Mueller.
It's 5, it's 5 to 11, I'd like to make a decision. I actually would, would move that, we would move, the charter discussion is a, is a discussion I actually really want to be sharp for.
All right, let's do it.
So I actually, I think we just, I'd like to make a motion that we move that to a later, to a, to our next council meeting, and just move forward with the informational items.
Is there a second to that motion? I mean, I.
I'll second that motion, just because I, I'm, I'm going to assume this is going to take longer than we have.
Can I just ask a question, now that it's been seconded?
Yes.
Does that, that doesn't affect anything as far as dates for us to put this on, or?
No, I mean, I, I think we still have plenty, not plenty of time, I think we still have time to get it done and on the ballot. It has to be put on by August, and it's like a 75-day period, but we have to fit the meetings in there, and there has to be certain spacing in between. If we bring it up next, we have, our next meeting is next week. If we just move it to next week, that's fine.
Okay, so I have a follow-up question. If we move it up to next week, how full is that agenda? Are we going to end up punting something else that's important?
I'll work with the mayor to figure this out.
Okay.
I don't have the good answer to your question right this moment, so.
And just before we decide that, Yelena, did you receive any speaker cards for, for that item?
No, we haven't received any cards.
Okay, because I, if somebody had waited, I wanted to at least give them the opportunity to speak on these. So, okay, so there is a motion and a second to continue item J2 to the next meeting.
Could I suggest that, just to continue the item to where it may fit in the, in the very near future?
Okay.
Actually, I would.
That gives us a lot more latitude.
I'd like to see it the next meeting.
Okay, all right.
I, I don't want it to get punted too far out.
I, I think it's got to come back next week, or we're going to get jammed on the time schedule.
That's what I'm worried about.
Yep.
The motion passed.
Okay, information items. Are there any questions, or? I'm going to ask one question on K1, which is really more for, I don't need a response tonight, but I, what I'd like to see is, is a list of exceptions to the full cost recovery, because we have, on an ad hoc basis at different times, come up with a couple of exclusions. For example, when a, when a street wants to do a, a block party, you know, we've decided to discount that. We may want to, we got feedback during our planning session about childcare facilities and maybe waiving, you know, fees related to traffic or, or parking studies for that. Rather than deal with them on an ad hoc basis, actually, when we adopt the schedule, that's, or, you know, accessory dwelling units, right? I think at one time we talked about maybe discounting the fee on that. That's why I do think of having an exceptions.
So we, absolutely, we can bring, and this is teed up for a study session next week, and so we will have some of that information ready, and obviously we'll get you more information as you guys continue to ask us good questions on this new fee schedule.
Perfect. Any other questions?
Related to exactly what you're asking for. Can you also bring us a schedule that shows, if we're providing services in two different places, the actual breakdown for both places?
Yes.
And that would mean, you know, a cost recovery, et cetera, for whatever those items might be?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have a related.
Yes, Councilmember Carlton.
On page 89, it says, "Staff will present recommended changes to the policy to reflect current practices and operations." I know that sometimes staff is working on making sure that they have the most up-to-date presentation for us the day before council meetings, and so they can't always be included in packets. But it really does help us a lot, if possible, where possible, to get the presentations beforehand, so we can digest it, because sometimes the, the presentations that were given have a lot of information for us to digest on the fly, and.
Particularly if there's no staff report on the item.
Yeah, and for those that don't know, we spend a lot of time studying everything before we get here. That's part of what we volunteer for, and it would help. I know it's not always possible, where possible, it really helps to give us this information, even if it's in presentation.
Understood. We will strive to do so. I don't think it'll be ready for Thursday's packet, but that, we will, let me see what we can do.
Yeah, I'll just piggyback on what you just said, Kat. I totally agree. And even if we just get it at noon before the council meeting.
Right, that's what I'm saying. We may just get it to you 24 hours in advance, rather than.
Great, all right. Good. Any other questions on information items? All right, I assume no city managers report this evening. Councilmember reports. Okay, I think we are adjourned until next week. Oh, and we are adjourned in honor of a former mayor, Billy Ray White. So, thank you, everyone.